Well, welcome to our village board meeting on Monday, the October 12th. It's just a little after seven o'clock. I'd ask the village clerk to please take the roll call.
Trustee Backner?
Here.
Trustee Cargie?
Here.
Trustee Vasquez?
Here.
Trustee Brennan?
Here.
Trustee Hennick?
Here.
Trustee O'Connell?
Here.
President Aducey?
Here.
Okay. If I can ask everyone to please stand if you'd like and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and justiciable.
Okay, very good. Do we have any citizens' comments here? None. Okay, thank you. It's good to see you in the room here. Okay, we have a, maybe before we get to the elected official comments announcements, we'll go ahead and swear in one of our new firefighters. They're actually in the room tonight, so seems a little bit like we're getting back to normal. So, welcome Jarrett Ercoley. Did I get it? All right. Please step up to the podium and our clerk will, oh, well, Kurt, you're gonna do first? Okay. Can we see, there you go. There you go.
Madam President, members of village board, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to present to you Jarrett Ercoley, our newest candidate for firefighter paramedic. Jarrett is 31 years old and currently lives in Downers Grove. He was raised in Lamont, Illinois, along with his older brother and younger sister. He graduated from Lamont High School and then he went on to Valparaiso University where he earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in music. After graduation, he taught music and played in a metal band. Jarrett decided to change careers. His father and uncle were both firefighters and Jarrett states that he has finally listened to his dad in his pursuit of career in firefighting. So Jarrett went to paramedic school at Morris Hospital in Morris, Illinois, where he recently graduated. He started attending the Romeoville Fire Academy today. He will complete his basic firefighter in December. Jarrett is joined tonight by his mother Kelly and his father Jim, as well as his fiancee Lindsay. Madam Clerk, would you please administer the oath of office to candidate Ercoley?
No shaking hands, and Kurt is there. There you go. Please raise your right hand. Do you wanna say it for, do you want it to be on the screen or so his parents can see it? There you go.
Um, so his parents can see it now move.
Okay. So why don't you turn so your parents and fiancee can see.
You're our first swearing in.
Yeah, yeah. This is where we're a little rough around the edges, but we're getting there.
I'm gonna see next year, they all kind of creepy way.
Honest. Please raise your right hand. I, Jarrett Ercoley.
I, Jarrett Ercoley.
Having been appointed to the office of firefighter paramedic.
Having been appointed to the office of firefighter paramedic.
In the village of River Forest.
In the village of River Forest.
In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter paramedic.
Of the office of firefighter paramedic.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I'm not going to shake your hand. I'm gonna sign it. Jarrett, and if you wanna sign it after me. And I believe there's a pen right there. Right up here.
Thank you.
And we're gonna have his fiancee Lindsay pin his badge on him.
Maybe. Hey, we'll take a picture. Put it with mom and dad. You can take a picture with the fam- yeah, mom and dad, if that's okay with you. I mean, yeah.
You don't mind.
Well, I, I got your family.
I've waited for this for a long time.
All right. Yeah, just get out of the way. Yeah, go back. There you go.
Kathy?
Yes.
We usually have a picture with the whole village board and the staff with someone who's newly sworn in. Maybe we need to take a print screen of the gallery view along with him getting the pin and give that to him.
All right. Let's, okay, that's great, Katie, great idea. Why don't we, can, do you guys know how to do a screen save of a?
Print, print screen.
Yeah, you print the screen. Hang on. Great idea.
Or you could put it up on the big screen, he could stand in front of it.
There we go.
I'm used, oh, here it is, because I'm used to my, uh, keyboards.
I think it's function F7, isn't it? Oh, no, bottom right side.
Yeah, I think I got it.
All right. Great, thanks for the idea. All right, well, congratulations, Jarrett, and welcome to our village. We're glad you're here.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. All right. Very good. So, you're very welcome to stay for our board meeting, but I know you probably have better things to do.
I'll take a fast board.
I understand that. I completely understand. And thank you to their, his colleagues for coming.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a good evening. Okay, that brings us to now the elected officials' comments and announcements, and I'll go ahead and start with Erica, if you don't mind, Erica.
I do not. So I'd like to start with a land acknowledgement. As we begin today, we are mindful that we hold these meetings on land that was once and still is inhabited by indigenous people, including the Obejua, the Chipewa, the Menominee, the Palawami nations, and more. And we remember our nation's history and honor the native people as stewards of this land that was colonized and that River Forest continues to be a place many people from diverse backgrounds live and gather. And so with that, I just want to acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day and so happy Indigenous Peoples' Day to everybody. Acknowledge Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month and so happy, I think we're on maybe the last few days of that as well, as that celebration begins to wrap up. And I know we have a few proclamations later on in relation to that census work. We keep, as an update with that, we keep getting information out to the public as much as possible. We do have that deadline now that will hold fast, October 31st, with the expectation, I believe, that a report from the US Census will be, will be provided by the end of the year on population for the entire country. And so between that and then, as an update to the, I think I'm calling, we're calling it maybe the advisory group now, not to get some terminology mixed, we have a meet and greet for those people who have been committed, who have come, committed to a River Forest Equity Group for the trustees of both Maywood and River Forest and Kathy, both our respective village presidents. So everybody should have received the invitation for that today. If for some reason you didn't, please let me know. And that's just a way for us to get together and begin to just meet and get to know one another. So many more of these to come, but looking forward to that. And I also did just want to ask, I don't know if this is going to be coming up at some point, but Eric, I would like to see, or have an update, maybe have something tonight that you could say around Lake and Lathrop and just, I had seen something as an article in the newspaper about them raking ground, I think, spring 2021 to be completed by November 2021. It feels like we are maybe extending again beyond what we had offered to them originally back last October. And so I just, I'm not quite sure that if, if they are starting in spring, if November, if there's, it's gonna be completed by November. So I'll end with that, and I think I did send you, Eric, in relation to the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation, I did send you just a few quick updates that we talked about, but the Lake and Lathrop thing, too.
Well, let's address that right now. Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. So the, the items that they're working on right now onsite at Lake and Lathrop, last Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday, they finally were able to coordinate the electrical switch over with ComEd and the present, the building owner over at the corner of Ashland and Lake. So that took some additional coordination and work because the power had to be shut down at that building so that the power transfer could switch over. And the reason that's important is because the power to the site happened coming from the east across Lathrop, and so over time, that was a project that they were working on in terms of direct burial of a lot of the lines, and then ultimately, once that work was done, working on the coordination for the switch over. So that work is done, and now they're working on taking the existing poles and things like that off the site, and that's a coordination, not just with ComEd, but you have to remember with Comcast, AT&amp;T, and all the other utilities to get that, that, those utilities and that infrastructure out of the way. The other item that they've been working on relates to the, to the remediation, and so I think I may have reported back at a previous meeting, if I'm repeating myself, let me know. They have, the developer has gone ahead and done the initial round of treatment to the site. That site was then tested. Those tests came back and there was one area, one, so basically when they tested, they put soil borings into the ground. So they basically drilled down into the ground, pulled the dirt out into a cylinder, and then go ahead and test that material to get its, essentially to see how much of the chemical of the, of the tetracycline is still in the ground. So there was only, of all the different soil, soil borings that they conducted, there was only one of them where that level was still higher than where it needed to be. They have now since waited a little bit longer to see if the additional time would allow for more curing to take place to get that down to a more acceptable level. So they've, just last week, went back out to retest that, and now that's back at the lab and we're waiting, you know, with the results within a couple of weeks to see where that, so that last boring is. If that boring comes back underneath the acceptable level, then the remediation will be deemed, the soil treatment portion, portion of remediation will be deemed complete.
So I think also, I think where Erica was talking about, maybe you need to explain further the planned development, I mean, there's no need for an extension because we're already in the planned development, Erica. So maybe you wanna go through that a little bit because I think she was saying, do we have to extend it by them starting in spring 2021? That's when the building permit would be issued.
Right. And so they are still wrapping up a couple of items relating to the building permit. Those items have been reviewed by village staff and we've sent that back to the developer to, to finish those last items. We're getting, the issue, the universe of issues, if you will, has been narrowed down significantly, so we're close, getting closer to that point where we could go ahead and then issue them a building permit to do that work.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure, Erica, that you're clear that the planned development that we voted on and we approved i- is still in existence. What we're working on is all the steps to get to a building permit. And once that building permit is issued by the village, then they can start putting a shovel in the ground. And given winter, January, February, that's why we believe it will be spring of 2021. I don't know where the November came from.
If I could, this is Patty, if I can jump in. I actually have had similar questions when I read the article myself and had seen the mention of construction commencement being spring 2021. According to the RDA timeline that was voted on and extended last October, actually a year ago, more or less today, there was the timeline of when certain steps needed to happen within the planned development agreement. And so the one date was that they were supposed to start commencement of construction May 30th or 30 days after, whichever the latter, of receiving the letter, and that the original completion date was going to be, I believe, June 2021. And with the amended RDA, it turned it to, extended it to November of 2021. So that's where that date comes in.
Right.
So how is that not, so it sounds like to Erica's question that we're not gonna be compliant with the RDA if they're only breaking ground spring of 2021?
Can I ask a question? What's the definition of breaking ground?
Okay.
Because as I thought, as I saw it last week or the week before, yes.
Let's, again, I don't wanna get into, we can, we can have a separate conversation.
They're questioning what's going on, so I'm just trying to ask a question about what is the definition of breaking ground? They've spent a ton of money relocating utilities. They've spent a ton of money.
We'll answer, we'll answer that question. Okay, let's, hang on.
I was gonna ask for a point of order, and can we go back to elected official comments?
Yeah, okay, I think we will, and Patty, we will answer that question because it has to do how, how our, all of our planned developments work, because you have X amount of time to, the minute you get a building permit and then when your development is finished. But we'll go through that process for you so that you understand it.
No, I understand the process.
So let's go on, Eric, you're, Erica, you're done. Tom, trustee Cargie?
The dear committee was supposed to meet last Wednesday, but a couple of members asked that we not hold the meeting because it would coincide with the Vice President's debates, and so we did cancel that meeting. We're still currently trying to figure out a time when we get most of the members there. Unfortunately, people's schedules are getting busy, and so the best we could do from the last doodle that Sarah, Sarah sent out, was only 10 members in the committee. I'd ask Sarah today to ask for some additional dates in November so that we can get more people, I think, especially as we're getting to the end of this thing. I think it's important that everyone have a chance to weigh in, and that that's all I have.
Okay, very good. Then we've got trustee, that's good.
I want to start out by, I'm not sure if Jarrett's there, but for the record, I'm congratulating him and welcoming him, as well as his fiancee and parents to River Forest. The other item I have is that the, both President Aducey and I, myself, we attended on October the 8th, we attended the mayor, Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus on the Age Friendly Communities Collaborative, and we talked about, it was well-attended, we had approximately about 15 municipalities that attended, and the items that we talked about were, I think, follow-up on the fellowship, being able to identify grant, grant funding, as well as identifying actual fellows to participate in the fellowship programs for municipalities. I will say that the MMC did have a fellow by the name of Grace Mueller, who will be on staff at the AT&amp;M, so we see MMC, however, because she's new, they are looking for ways in which she can participate with different municipalities on their age-friendly initiatives. So of course, I was happy to volunteer our, our committee. Grace will be attending our age-friendly attack committee, at least for this Wednesday, and, and as well as possibly doing some research for our committee, which is great. The other thing we talked about was identifying workshops for all of the municipalities, what needs they may have related to age-friendly initiatives. We also talked about technical assistance, what the technical assistance municipalities may have as it relates to the age-friendly initiatives. With that, we reviewed and did a deep dive on the repository that we're putting together for all the municipalities regarding age-friendly, age-friendly issues, dementia issues, et cetera, anything related to our senior services, so we're building up that folder. Last but not least, the main topic of the meeting was discussing training for our first responders relating to dementia, and I'm happy to say that our police department has already gone through that, so we were probably one of the leaders, and congratulations to Chief O'Shea as well, in terms of already setting the pace and already moving ahead. But again, other municipalities are trying to do the same, and so we walked through that. So that's pretty much a summary of what we talked about, what we did. Our next meeting is on December the 3rd, so unless anybody has any questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Around the clock, here we go. Clerk, anything you wanna?
Nothing tonight, thank you, madam.
Okay, you're welcome, madam clerk. Okay, trustee Brennan?
I also wanted to acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day today, and I'm looking forward to attending the Maywood River Forest Equitable Working Group Meet and Greet this coming Saturday afternoon at, in Maywood. And then I had two quick comments. One, I was driving through River Forest this afternoon after the rain, and I noticed how spectacularly beautiful and charming our village is in the fall. Between the trees and the leaves and the color and the architecture and also the Halloween decorations, our village really shines in this season, and it just made me really appreciate how that I am, we are, to be living in this community. And my second comment, and it's a little ironic considering what I just said, is that I have been hearing anecdotally and reading a little bit on River Forest social media sites, and then also in tonight's packet, in the police report section over there, that we have had an uptick in break-ins in our cars that we are leaving unlocked in our driveways. So I wanted to mention that, you know, it's very unfortunate, no one wants to have their car broken into and have their stuff stolen, so just a reminder to residents to lock your cars, don't leave your keys and your cash and your credit cards and your other valuables in your cars. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you for that reminder, and you're absolutely right, so thanks. And it is beautiful out there, for sure. Okay, trustee Hennick, I'm gonna ask Eric to answer your question. So I think her question was the timeline in the planned development, and the November of 2021 is when it was supposed to be ended, but the building permit hasn't been issued yet. So it's, when the building permit gets issued, you have so many, much time to build, so go ahead.
Right. So the ordinance, the planned development ordinance, Lisa, it's what, 15 days? No, not 15, yeah, 15 days, that'd be great. 15 months from when the permit's issued, correct?
Yeah. Right. So under a typical situation, when you don't have an RDA, the RDA amends the timelines a little bit, they would have nine months to come in for permit, they would have six months to obtain the permit and start construction, and then they would have an additional 18 months to complete construction. So a project like Chicago and Harlem has a total of 33 months from the time zoning entitlement is granted until the time they have to complete construction. So the timeline on the front end was a little bit different with the RDA, but the backend timelines are still the same. So from the time the permit is issued to the time that they're required to complete essentially site construction in the shell of the building, there may be some internal completion of white box spaces or residential units, but they have 18 months to complete construction.
So at this point, there's, it's on target in terms of dates, everything in terms of the planned development effort?
Yeah, I mean, they have started work, I mean, the challenge has been, it's with the ComEd and the remediation work, so they have, it's not that they're not doing anything out there. They can't go vertical yet because remediation isn't done.
That's correct. So I think that answers that question. So we're pretty much on the way, Lake and Lathrop is pretty much on the way.
Yeah, like I said, it's, it's the, the three main areas are the utilities that works, there was additional work done last week on that. The remediation, they're waiting for a soil boring to come back to see if they need to do additional treatment or not, and then the third item, completing the, completing the request from the village so that when they are ready, we can issue them a building permit.
Okay, so trustee Hennick, anything else you wanna add?
No, and thank you for that clarification, but can, can I just ask, as long as we're on the topic, do you know how many pre-sales they're at?
I don't off the top of my head. I wanna say they were like around eight or so, but I don't, I don't have an up-to-date number on that.
I know they've had lots of inquiries, especially since the pandemic, partly because apparently the way they're building the building, you know, they're having elevators to each apartment or condo, which is nice, and they're having very large outdoor spaces of each of the condos, especially the ones that I think are on the top floors, so. Anything else you'd like to add, Patty?
Well, I do my trustee comments now, yeah. So just wanted to say good evening and to echo the happy Indigenous Peoples' Day today. And I wanted to share that my son and I were able to join the joint community bike ride October 3rd that started in Broadview and ended in Maywood. It was actually a really nice experience. It was their inaugural bike ride. This year, they did bill it as being a tour day proviso, but I know the intention is to be able to expand with other communities. I know they would love, and which would be great, for River Forest to be formally participating next year when they do it. It's just another example of how we can have these joint neighboring community relations. I was happy to meet some of our neighbors, have conversation with them that day, so it really was enjoyable. So I'd like to see us participate next year. And then the only thing I'd like to mention right now is that if I could ask to have the proclamations that are in our consent agenda, if I could ask to have those pulled so we can talk about them separate from the rest of the consent agenda?
So when we get to that point, yeah, just go ahead and say you want E, F, G, and H pulled?
Yep.
And as long as we get the majority of the board, it should be okay.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, trustee O'Connell?
Thank you. Good evening. I hope everybody's staying safe, wearing their masks and socially distancing. As I reviewed this week's package, which contained a ton of great information as always, but especially all of our financial and budget information, I wanna congratulate Rosie and the team on an excellent job of pulling all that together. But first, I also wanna thank Kathy and Eric, and Eric's team for monitoring and making decisions that have kept us on solid footing through the pandemic. Our village, like every business in America, is planning for recovery. Professionally, I'll tell you, the real estate industry's in flux. Almost weekly, I read stories about store closings and bankruptcies, but I also see others taking advantage of opportunities to grow their businesses. I think now is the time for us to begin our plan for recovery. We need to look at a source for long-term revenue.
It's only $10.
We need, we need to help our existing businesses grow by attracting new customers. We need to attract new businesses, and to do so, we need to create a plan. A big part of that plan should be, a big part of that plan should include a plan for the Madison Street tip. I'm asking that the village staff engage the EDC in hiring a professional development firm to work with the EDC in creating a plan for Madison Street as we have previously discussed. As I mentioned, the industry's in flux, and maybe, just maybe, there's a developer out there who wants to secure a piece of property in a desirable neighborhood. I'd appreciate your consideration of this request. I think this is very important at this point in time that we start to make some movement on this as we come out of the pandemic, pandemic, and with money being so cheap, I just think that there's gonna be developers out there, and we just need to start working today and get ahead of it. So that's it on my comments. Thanks, Kathy. Thanks, Kathy. Can you hear me? Hello?
I can hear you, Bob.
Kathy, I'm trying, I'm done, Kath.
I don't know if Kathy knows that she's muted.
Eric, Sarah, John?
All right, hold on. Hold on, I can hear you, Bob, but they can't, so let me try to figure that out.
They're working on it.
Can you hear?
Kathy?
Okay, can you hear us now?
No, not yet. You stayed, we're in the waiting room.
Yes, yes.
All right, all right. Sorry, we had to reboot our audio.
Yeah, Anderson can hear us.
Okay, very good. All right, Bob, I'm sorry, we kind of lost you.
He was saying about working with village staff to work on a more of an action plan to readdress Madison, the Madison Avenue.
Yeah, if you can go back to that, your maybe last paragraph or two.
So.
I, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was just saying, I think now's the time for us to start planning our recovery. We need to look at sources of long-term revenues. We need to help our existing businesses grow new customers. We need to attract new businesses, and to do so, we need to create a plan. A big part of that plan should include the Madison Street Tiff. I'm asking that the village staff engage the EDC in hiring a professional development firm to work with the EDC in creating a plan for Madison Street as we've previously discussed. As I mentioned, the industry's in flux, maybe, or just maybe, there's a developer out there who wants to secure a piece of property in desirable neighborhood.
Turn it up, turn it up. Okay. Yep, okay, thank you, Bob. And yes, I think that's an area that we agree with is to begin putting a market plan or an RP together for the Madison Street. So thank you for reminding us of that. So let me just tell you a little bit about what I've been doing. Just before our seven o'clock meeting, I had a one-hour meeting along with the Chief O'Shea. We presented to them, it was the Peace and Justice Committee from the St. Luke's Parish. We presented the Maywood Covenant as well as the Affordable Housing Plan, and Jim talked about social justice. Since we have Sheila, you on the phone, the Peace and Justice Committee is very interested in connecting with Dominican University on your framework. You know, they're, they're a combination of probably River Forest Residence, Oak Park Residence, and possibly Forest Park. So I will send you the information to you so that we can include them into perhaps one of your working groups. And as Russ mentioned, I also attended or led, I'm the Chair of the Age Friendly Collaborative for the Mayor's Caucus, and we had a very productive two-hour seminar, roughly many municipalities, over 50 municipalities and partners that joined our conference call, so it was great. I also attended the Smarter Government and Local, Smarter Government and Local Government Transformation Strategies. It was quite insightful, great ideas in terms of COVID recovery and some transformation strategies that I'll write up and give to our staff. So that's pretty much all for me. So I will go ahead and move to the consent agenda. If I could, I know Patty wants to remove E, F, and G and H, so somebody can move and second the rest of it?
I, I would move to have consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and then I, J, K, L, M, N, O.
Okay, do I hear second?
I'll second.
Okay. So any, any questions on those items? Hearing none, if I can ask the clerk to read it and then to take the vote.
Consent agenda item A, committee of the whole meeting minutes September 21st, 2020. B, Village Board of Trustees meeting minutes September 29th, 2020. C, Village Board of Trustees Executive Session meeting minutes September 29th, 2020. D, Special Village Board of Trustees meeting minutes October 5th, 2020. I, Right-of-Way Encroachment Agreement at 628 William for Sprinkler System. J, waive competitive bidding and approve emergency repair of Fire Red G222 due to water pump repair from Certified Fleet Services, Inc. for $34,018. K, Performance Measurement Report. L, Monthly Department Reports. M, Accounts Payable, September 2020, $1,494,134.68. N, Financial Report, September 2020. O, Village Administrators Report.
Okay, Trustee Carji?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Hennig?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, very good. So if I can get a motion and a second for E, F, G, and H?
I'll move to approve consent agenda items E, F, G, and H.
Okay, hear second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments on those proclamations?
So if I can just say, the reason I asked to have these pulled separately is I actually wanted to have a point of clarification as far as our proclamations, because it doesn't seem to be consistency in when they appear in our consent agenda and when they appear otherwise. And so I just wanted a clarification on these items here. Is the intention to be your voice, Kathy as president, or is it meant to be the voice of the board?
Yeah, it should be the voice of the board. So what we, you know, we, we put them on the consent agenda more for efficiency sometimes, but no, it's the voice of the board. So if you want to read them, we could certainly read them.
Well, I just mean because the way they're, they're written at the end, it's that you're declaring this proclamation. And I know back in June when we had the proclamation for declaring June Pride Month, that was listed on our agenda under trustee comments, not in our consent agenda, and we didn't take a vote on that. So that's why I was wanting to clarify why this, why these would be different. And then the other terms of content, then, if it is, if the intention is for us to have an inclusive voice, then it seems like having some consistency with the source and references and accuracy of the proclamations. I personally, in reading a couple of them, in particular, the Italian Heritage Month Proclamation and the Hispanic Heritage, I don't feel that the two are reflective and give the same persona, and I think there should be consistency there.
Okay. So do you, go ahead, Greg, go ahead.
All right, thank you. I'm sitting out in the audience this evening, so I'll, that's why I've got the microphone. Hello, is this on? Can you hear me now? Thank you. So a proclamation is a, is an official statement by the elected village president. These items can appear either as part of the consent agenda, as President Aducey said, for the sake of efficiency, or they may appear separately if they are of special importance to be read separately. The idea of the village board voting on a proclamation is fine, it's kind of a ratification by the legislative body of the village president's proclamation, which is her right as the village president to make those. So with regard to the legal aspect, unless there's a special reason to pull one out and have it read, the consent agenda is a fine place to put it.
Typically, it is for efficiency. So if you want to go ahead and read them, we can possibly read them. I mean, it's all, but right now, that's for to run an efficient board meeting. So if there's other questions or comments, I'll go ahead, I mean, unless you want to read a particular proclamation, we'd be happy to do that. Is anybody open to reading the proclamations? I'd, I'd certainly welcome any of the trustees to read it. Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and read the consent agenda, E through H.
Consent agenda, agenda item E, Proclamation Designating October 12th, 2020 as Indigenous Peoples' Day. S, Proclamation Designating October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. G, Proclamation Designating October 2020 as Italian-American Heritage Month. H, Proclamation Designating October 2020 as Hispanic Heritage Month.
Okay. Take the whole, yeah, please? Thank you. Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Hennig?
I will say, because I do feel that these are all important proclamations to have, and when we have these type of proclamations, I'd like to make a recommendation in the future that we are consistent in the way that they are written and presented, as I said. And it would also be ideal, particularly for the Indigenous Peoples' Day, it would have, I think, sort of been helpful to have been in our last meeting since the proclamation reads to encourage a call to action to businesses and residents to honor the day in some way. If it was at our last meeting, that would kind of give people that awareness instead of being tonight. So just for a point of future recommendations, but I will vote yes because I do think they are proclamations that should be acknowledged.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes, and as somebody who grew up with, somebody who I considered my grandmother and came from, her parents came from Italy, I'm proud to have that tonight on here as somebody who identifies as Latinx and understands that we still have thousands of people at the border who are, especially children in cages, who are being realized because they just want a better future. These things are really important to me, and when, when I see a generation of my community being taken away from me, it hurts. So having something like this is really important to me, and thank you for the Indigenous Day as well. For those who may be experiencing domestic violence, there are ways to get help. Sarah's Inn is one place. You can also call a national hotline. If you have a friend, you can call that national hotline and find ways where you can seek help for your friends as well. So yes.
Trustee Carji?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, thank you. And Erica, thank you for that softness. That was very much appreciated. All right, so let's move on to the consent items for separate consideration. So I'll need a motion and a second for item 6A.
I move we approve payment for the, from the general fund to McDonald's Caravetes for $163.51.
Second.
I would ask that the clerk not call my name, given my relationship with the franchisee.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Hennig?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Carji?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, very good. Okay, the next item is, this is a motion to appointment of Kimberly Hoyt to the Traffic and Safety Commission. Jack Clary gave his resignation because he's moving out of town, and, and therefore, we needed to fill the commissioner's spot. So if I can get a motion and a second to appoint Kimberly Hoyt to that position.
I move to, sorry, I move to appoint, to concur with the recommendation of the village president to appoint Kimberly Hoyt to the Traffic and Safety Commission for the remainder, for the remainder of the term expiring April 30, 2021. And I personally have worked with Kimberly Hoyt when we were at the District 200 Imagine Work Group project, so I think she'd be great.
Second.
Second.
Okay, very good. So any comments or questions regarding Kim? Hearing none, I'd ask the clerk to please take the vote. Trustee Hennig?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Carji?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, great. Yeah, Kim's going to be great. She'll bring some diversity to that group. Okay, so moving ahead to unfinished business, and unfortunately, Sheila, we're still in unfinished business, but we're working on it. Sheila Rafford-Hill and some of her colleagues have joined us this evening, again, to talk through the culture of equity and inclusion with Dominican University. So Sheila, you've got the mic. Welcome.
Thank you, President Aduci. Thank you, members of the Board of Trustees, Dominican University colleagues, residents of River Forest, and guests. I'm, I'm just delighted to be here, and I'm going to talk a little bit about what we talked about at the last general meeting under unfinished business when Dominican University proposed a partnership with the village of River Forest that would include a voluntary association, if you will, an alliance that would help us work together to engage each other and various community organizations in anti-racist work on our campus and also within the community more broadly. So I'm going to share my screen for a moment and pull up a couple of slides, if I can do that. I hope you can see it.
Yep, we can.
And so- And so, this is, good. So this is, on the left side of the screen, you should see our Truth, Racial Healing and Transformation logo from Dominican University. And, sorry, I'm trying to move the, and I think I talked about this last time, as the Truth, Racial Healing and Transformation project was developed by the W.K. Kellogg Foundation. This began in 2016, but it quickly became a nationally recognized, community-based initiative for racial justice. And in 2018, the Association of American Colleges and Universities committed to establish 150 campus-wide centers. And in 2020, Dominican was named as one of 26 centers. Now there are over 30 centers that are engaged with the Association of American Colleges and Universities. These centers have really committed their anti-racist activities in their spheres of influence around this particular framework. The framework calls for building relationships across differences, promoting racial healing, changing the narrative, creating more complete and just narratives through our schools and cultural institutions, through our entertainment industry, through journalism, and also digital media and publishing, changing narratives about the stories we tell ourselves that exclude many, many people as individuals, but also as groups, whose identities have really been marginalized. We also see truth, racial healing, and transformation as this way of building relationships and promoting healing, particularly racial healing, but the healing that comes from those of us who have been really marginalized by generations and generations of racial inequities. And those racial inequities are about aspects of race, but also other, other forms of our identities that have been marginalized. So this model is really pulling people together, building relationships, healing, changing the way, the stories we tell ourselves about ourselves, and then working to promote racial justice and equity through dismantling areas in our society that promote separation, through dismantling unjust policies and practices, and through creating more economically just and economically sustainable ways for us to work together and dismantle inequalities that we see in our society. So this particular model is a model that we've been working with on our campus. And as we have worked with this model, we developed a kind of a mission for Dominican University's Truth, Racial Healing and Transformation Center. And we said that our center, rather than just be a location, it would be a hub for innovative projects, effective coalitions, and new initiatives. We would empower students, staff, faculty, and members of our community to eliminate racial inequities on our campus and in communities we serve, and promote a greater understanding of the global history of oppression and eliminate the effects of racism. I see that the proclamations that you passed, and I'm very proud as a River Forest resident to know that these are passed, because this is a way of saying that we want to eliminate inequities, we want a greater understanding of our global history, and we want to strive to transform the world. So I'm very happy and proud tonight to, on the heels of that, to talk about Dominican's Truth, Racial Healing and Transformation. So what, where we left off last time was to think of, well, how might the village of River Forest work together with Dominican University's Truth, Racial Healing and Transformation? And as we talked, it seemed to me that if we could form a voluntary alliance with government, educational institutions, community-based organizations, groups in River Forest, Oak Park, Maywood, and other communities, we could support equity initiatives for opening, for open and welcoming communities. And how it would work is that we would just work together through our various working groups to mobilize and support anti-racist and inclusive projects, initiatives, and activities. We would hope that working, by working together, we can increase the scope, scale, and impact of community-wide and campus-wide efforts. As a voluntary association, we serve as an anchor for partnerships, but other community groups, churches, schools, libraries, our civic society can also serve as anchors, and we work together to expand the scope, the outreach, and the impact of the things that we're doing. So to give you one example of something we're working on right now, Janine Hill Fletcher, whose work around a book titled The Sin of White Supremacy, has allowed us to have conversations about the intersection between racial justice, white supremacy, and Christianity. And to understand those intersections and how they may mar, they have historically marginalized groups of people, why that is, and why we need to be aware of it, and why we need to work to dismantle white supremacy through our commitment to those who have religious traditions, that they do understand, believe, that can promote racial justice. So to coordinate that reading, community reading group, we developed, meaning the Dominican University Truth, Racial Healing and Transformation group, developed a partnership with the Sienna Center, and now, members of the Dominican community and members of the Oak Park River Forest community are reading that book. And they will have their first discussion about the book tomorrow night, and there'll be another one next week. And then on the 22nd, Janine Hill Fletcher will be at the Sienna Center, and all are invited to hear what she has to say. So that expands the scope and the, and the reach of that particular project, just by working collaboratively. So that's what we're really looking to do. We also know that River Forest has an equity team, and it has the Maywood Twin Village Covenant. And Dominican would be a partner in supporting, in any way that was appropriate, the goals and objectives of the equity team's work, and also its work with the village of Maywood. So the next steps that we're proposing to move us to partnership is for the village to pass a resolution that supports the village collaboration with the, with Dominican University, that the village would designate one or two liaisons to work with the Dominican TRHT group, that our working group would develop a guiding mission for our plans for 2020 and 2021, that the Dominican University TRHT could also designate liaisons to work with the village in projects as appropriate, and that the Dominican University Board of Trustees would pass a resolution in support of our partnership. And then finally, Dominican would identify collaborators as appropriate to support the Maywood Twin Village Covenant. So that's basically where we are, and I wanted to take any questions that you might have. And I also wanted to share that we have a number of working groups that are working right now to make all of our projects work in our communities. So we have a group that works on leadership, a group that organizes racial healing circles. We have a small group that organizes communication and branding. We have folk looking for resources. We have faculty looking to enhance our curriculum and engage our students in that process as well. We have a group of people working on community engagement, and we have an evaluation group, and we'd love to have, we'd love to add the River Forest partnership to these working groups. So with that, I'll stop sharing and take any questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Sheila. That was very, very good. Yes, I'll go ahead and open it up to the board with any questions, and then I'll wrap it up. Okay.
Sheila, this is Erica. I just want to say thank you very much for presenting tonight, and thank you very much for spending some time over the course of the last week in talking through these things and just having good conversations around all of this in general. And I really look forward to the beginning of this relationship and finding ways where we can just use each other, you know, and learn from each other as a community.
Yeah, very good. Thank you, Erica.
If I can just, this is Patty. Thank you, Sheila. It's a good presentation, and it's clear that it's a thoughtful one in all the work that you're doing, so thank you for that. And I'll echo Trustee Bachner's comments that it's exciting work. As we said at our last meeting, it's important work and ongoing work. It's not necessarily going to have a specific end date, and so everybody recognizing that we're all going to be learning along the way and evolving in our thinking. So this is great. Thank you.
Very good.
Sheila, this is Russ. Again, I'm going to echo what the other two trustees said, but also, I like the fact that it's much more expansive and inclusive of just, not just the village, but of other respective stakeholders that I think will be important, as well as maybe eventually our neighboring villages. So I think this is a great start, and I'm looking forward to it as well.
Thank you, Sheila. I'm just wondering, and I realize that this is an ongoing process, but when do you feel that your various working groups would be able to make recommendations to River Forest?
So, thank you for, for that question, because it's a very important question. There are two things to say about it. The first is that we want to promote collaboration, coordination, better communication. We need to do this for our students, and we need to do this for our residents. As we begin to work together very closely, we're going to find ways that we can make our village, our university, better for our students, better for our community. And that may require some changes in policies, procedures, and practices. And as that happens, we then begin to develop how we're going to acknowledge that concern, develop that policy, and pass it. So I think that it depends upon the, what it is we're looking at, at a very, at any given moment, and it depends upon how fast we want to move as a community and how fast we want to move within the university. So I would say that some policies, some practices, and some procedures could be done relatively soon. Others may take longer. But the point is, we want to work together toward racial equity, and we will take every opportunity to get that done.
So you don't see this as a sort of a final report kind of thing? It's just kind of an iterative process with the village as your process goes through?
I don't see it as a final report, but there may be times when a final recommendation is necessary. But that would be jointly decided between the various stakeholders whose interests are at stake.
Thank you for all the time you put in, and the various meetings you've been to. We do appreciate it, and I appreciate the work that you're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Sheila, can I follow up on Trustee Kargi's, I guess, question? But it sparked a question for me. So when we're, when your group is looking at this, I see your group because it's your proposal for now, I know it's going to be expanded, but, so when we're looking at policies, and I see we're going to be doing, or the group's going to be looking at research, probably data that's going to help support any modifications, changes that will come out of it. So it's not just the research itself or recommendation out, you know, pulled out from air. We're really going to be looking at what's affecting our community, our, you know, and people in our community, and the stakeholders in our community. So it's more of an educated evaluation and a recommendation that's going to come out of this group. Is that correct?
Well, that's absolutely correct, Trustee Vasquez. But even beyond looking at data, we want to look at people's lived experiences as well.
Okay.
That's part of the data that we want to look at. And where there is suffering, we want to alleviate that suffering. And we may be able to do that with a practice, with a procedure, with something that we're not doing now that we could easily do. So we really want to, to have our finger on the pulse of places where we can replace injustice with justice, and together, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Sheila, I want to thank you also for your, I didn't know if I was talking at the same time.
No, no, go ahead. I'm sorry, I'm just acknowledging you, Katie.
Oh, thank you. I also wanted to jump in and thank you, because there is so much work to be done. You are a wonderful partner, and I'm so glad that we have you here in River Forest, and we have Dominican as a partner, and offering to do this work, to host it, to be the hub. You know, we've got the internal advisory group working on things, and then we've got Dominican stepping in, offering to sort of host this hub for the greater community. And it's fabulous, because it's too much for, it's so much to do. It's wonderful that we can be working in two different circles that overlap.
Yep. Thanks, Katie, yes.
Absolutely.
And you're absolutely, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. That's, you know, that's what made me so excited. Sheila and I have talked so many times, and Dr. Carroll, the president of Dominican, about this idea, when it came to, when Dr. Carroll and I chatted about it, it was, to me, it was so exciting, because I saw what you saw, Katie, and I think what the rest of the boards have seen now, as we start talking with Sheila further, and that is, you know, there's so much to do, to your point, and the community at large, we could be a better community. And I think Dominican University, along with Concordia, and other working groups and institutions that we're surrounded by, can help us be a better community. So very excited about that. And the interaction, to your point, the internal working groups that we're putting together... And the interaction, to your point, the internal working groups that we're putting together along with Dominican University will have, won't be mutually exclusive. There'll be some interaction, interlocking of each other. So that's what's the exciting part about it. And I'm glad that the board is embracing this and seeing the partnership. I think the way, you know, Dr. Carroll and I saw it when we initially spoke about it. So Sheila, on behalf of our village board, I, oh, I'm sorry, Bob, go ahead.
I just wanted to round out, I just wanted to round out the infield. Sheila, thank you very much. I did have a question though, as Kathy kind of lit a little thought in my mind. What's the interaction at this point in time in your conversations with Concordia? Because I think, you know, where you guys have a powerful organization, I think they have a powerful organization. How do we take and build on that? So I don't know if you, you're in a position to discuss that at this point in time? Or is that part of your investigative process as we kind of build this, if you will, network?
So, well, thank you for raising that. Happily, we now have a liaison from Concordia who will be working with us. And so the next step is for us to meet and to determine how we might continue to work with Concordia in terms of timelines for this semester leading into next semester. So we, we have every, Dr. Carroll has talked with Concordia. We have every intention to spread the TRHT message to Concordia. Concordia has every intention to reach back out to us. And now we need to really just put the timeline together.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to miss you. I just didn't see you waving. It's hard.
Will Kathy, will the vote on joining this partnership be up at our next meeting?
Yes, that's what I'm going to get to, Tom. So again, behalf of the village board and I, thank you, Sheila, and thank you, Dr. Carroll, and all the, your teammates that are on the call today and those that will be working with each, you know, through the, through this process. Just for the board's edification, yes, my intent is to put this partnership resolution together and hopefully pass it next board meeting. So Sheila, we'd like you to, we'd love to have you be part of when, next board meeting when we pass it. It will be nice to have you to join us. So, yes.
Well, thank you very much. And I just want to acknowledge my colleagues from Dominican University. The vice president for Mission and Ministry, Claire Noonan, who has really been very supportive of the work that we're doing on campus. And my colleague, Sister Peggy Ryan, who is in fact my partner in the working group that we have on TRHT. And all of my colleagues, whether they're here or not, they have been very, very supportive. And they want to work together with the village. I'm very proud of this.
Very good. Well, we're proud to be with you. And we will make it official in the partnership capacity. And we look forward to the long-term relationship that this will bring us. Okay, very good. Well, thank you, Sheila.
I just have one more comment. I apologize. So as we think through this partnership and having that come up to the board, I would like to propose that maybe it does make sense to, however, however it makes sense to codify the internal, I'll call the internal advisory group now, for River Forest around equity. And maybe if you plan on doing that at the next meeting with Dominican, that maybe we then do that with the advisory group as well at that meeting. I think that maybe just makes sense, especially given the advisory groups, their work with the Dominican, as we're seeing it, presenting it.
I agree with that. And I would only like to, you know, if I could just think about, because I just don't want to put too much in one meeting. But I mean, maybe it is, we do that partnership and then the following meeting, we codify the advisory group. I mean, just to, just so that we have, you know, time to talk about everything and discuss everything. Because we also, we also want to discuss, you know, how we're going to work with the partnership once we pass it, right? And how will we actually make it happen on our end? So there's some other further discussion I think we have to have after the partnership.
Kathy, Erica, I find doing that, I don't know that I completely understand at this point in time, the mission and what the advisory team is going to work on. So before we, before we get to a situation where we're going to start voting on something, I personally would like to have some more information. And so I don't know what that looks like right now. But, you know, I'll tell you right now, if I get a packet a week from Thursday, you know, I don't know that I can, I don't know that I'm ready to vote on this. So I just, again, I want to understand more about it. And I just don't feel like I got that right now.
Okay. Well, I think, well, again, I think we got to get to it and we will get to it. It may not be that next board meeting, but we will have it. I'm getting unstable. But we will, we will, we will get to it. I mean, it should happen sooner than later. So, so I agree. Okay, thank you so much. We'll go ahead and move on to our new business, which is 9A, if I can get a motion to accept the village comprehensive annual financial report or the fiscal year ended April 30, 2020, in a second, and we can discuss that.
I move to accept the village's comprehensive annual financial report of the fiscal year ended on April, or ending on April 30th, 2020.
A second. Okay, thank you. So is it Rosie or?
Yeah, so we'll turn it over to Finance Director Rosemary McAdams, who will then give us a quick overview and introduce our auditors.
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yeah, kind of.
Okay, sorry, I'm going to, I'm going to have to take off my mask. Good evening, everyone. In front of you or in your packet, you receive the 2020 comprehensive annual financial report and a letter to management discussing what the report means. Also, in the report, there's the transmittal letter and the management's, management discussion and analysis that gives a pretty good snapshot of what's in the full report. I have Kimberly Marshall here tonight with BKD. And she will kind of go over the main points of the report and the management letter for you. So, and then afterwards, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer. Kim, welcome.
Thanks, Rosie. Thank you. I hope everyone can hear me okay. So I appreciate everyone's time tonight. Normally, I like to be on site visiting everyone, but with COVID and all these new changes, this will have to do. I just want to start out and just thank Rosie, Kiki, and their team for all their time and effort during the audit. The audit did look a little bit different than in prior years due to having to work remotely. But we really appreciate all of their time and help and the phone calls that we had to really get through the questions and requests that we had for this year's audit process. So I will, I'm going to touch a few different sections of the reports and just highlight a few different areas. But of course, as we go through, if there's any questions, please just let me know. I'm going to start off with the larger document, which as Rosie mentioned, is your financial statements or your comprehensive annual financial report. If you have a hard copy, you should have tabs. But I'm going to go with the hard copy pages if you do want to flip through with me. I'm going to pass through the table of contents in your transmittal letter to the financial section. The first document in that section is the independent auditor's report. This is a clean, unmodified opinion. This is the best opinion you can get. And this is similar to prior years for the village. Following the opinion on page four is the management discussion and analysis that Rosie mentioned. I really like to call attention to these pages. If you were to read anything in good detail, I would really highlight this section. It gives a great job of highlighting some of the key financial activities, some of the impacts during the fiscal year. There's also some really nice tables in here that give you a good comparison of the current year versus the prior year. On page 22 is the start of the financial statements. You have your government-wide financial statements that show your governmental activities and your business-type activities. At the bottom of page 25, I just want to highlight governmental activities did have a decrease in the net position of 1.5 million for the year to end with your ending net position of a deficit of 9.1 million. Just want to highlight again, the deficit and the decrease really relates to the large liabilities that were put into place with the implementation of GASB 68 and OPEPs, which is GASB 75 over the last couple of years. So these relate to your pension liabilities. Your business-type activities, which really relates to your water and sewer fund, had an increase in your net position of 539,000 to arrive at an ending balance of 11.9 million. On page 26 is the start of the fund-level financial statements. At the bottom of page 28, I just want to highlight is your general fund. The general fund did have a positive increase in your fund balance of 392,000 for fiscal year 20 to arrive at an ending fund balance of 10.2 million. Just want to highlight, 4.7 million of that is considered unassigned. And flipping forward, you're past your notes. The other part of the report that I want to highlight is in the required supplementary information. It starts on page, on page 92. These several schedules goes from page 92 till about 90, till about page 100, actually. These pages give a good look at your pension liabilities for IMRF as well as the police and firefighters. It gives a look at the change of your pension liabilities as well as the funding percentage. And then there's also schedule of contributions for each of the different types. So again, just wanted to call your attention to those schedules. Any questions on the annual or the comprehensive annual financial report before I touch on the second document?
I don't have any. Does anybody, no? Go ahead.
So the second document is what we call our post-audit communication letter. This is really just required information that as we performed the audit, we're required to communicate back to the board. And so the first thing I just want to highlight is that if there were any significant issues that we assessed to be a significant deficiency or a material weakness, either in your internal controls or significant non-compliance, this is where you would find those type of items, similar to prior years. You're, you have a strong internal control structure. Your management team really does a good job focusing on that. And so there were no items that we would assess to be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. So really just wanted to highlight that right off the bat as that's really important to know. So this letter starts off just really documenting that we performed the audit in accordance with accounting standards generally accepted to the United States. On page two, it touches on some of the key estimates, just for the board to be aware of, which really relate to your capital assets and your depreciation. And then, of course, the liabilities that are determined by your actuaries for your pensions and your OPEP liability. At the bottom, we do have a section for audit adjustments. I do want to highlight that there were a few audit adjustments identified. They're not material to the financial statements as a whole. But of course, we're required to communicate those items to you. They related to capital assets. We worked with management on them who agreed and posted the adjusting entries as needed. So they, those are part of your ending balances for your financial statements. At the top of page three, and there is a section called proposed audit adjustments not recorded. There's a schedule on the back of the letter. It does show two entries that we call waived entries. Again, these are not material to your financial statements as a whole. We're required, as your auditors, to really track these because really, what we want to make sure of is that there's not a number of issues that could aggregate to be a more material issue. So that's why they're tracked here. But again, really just want to highlight that they're not material to your financial statements as a whole. On page three and four starts the section that's titled Internal Control Over Financial Reporting. In this section, this is where if we did have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, they would be listed here. There is one written recommendation here that I do want to highlight. Just let you know that fiscal year 20 was the first year we had to do TIF testing relating to the Madison Street Tax Incrementing Financing District. When your incremental revenues exceed 100,000, we're required to do what we call a TIF audit. We do some special testing. The key testing there really is about making sure that the expenditures related to the TIF are allowable. There were no exceptions, no issues found there. This one issue we have here, we're just required to communicate and related to just having annual joint review boarding meetings. I believe your management team got on top of this right away. And I believe there's one actually scheduled this month, as well as annually, the plan is to have them in January for going forward. And then finally, just wanted to mention, under Other Matters, there is a whole list of GASBs that will be looked at in implementing over the next several years. The good news for fiscal year 20 was due to COVID. GASB did allow a few GASBs to be pushed back one year, which was why there was no significant changes in your report this year. Just the two to be aware of going forward. The first is GASB 83. This does relate to asset retirement obligations. This is really just looking to see if there's costs that need to be accrued as a liability potentially when that asset is retired. And the second one is GASB 84, which relates to your fiduciary funds, your pension and firefighter pension trust fund. And the new GASB really just clarifies what a fiduciary fund is and potentially may change some of the financial statement presentation in future years. So I hope that helps. It gives a good highlight of the reports that we have before you today. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have none, other than to thank our village staff and our financial department for, it looks like a great audit. So does anybody have a question for our auditing team? Okay, hearing none, we don't, so.
We'll still need a vote.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, we're not, so if you could please take the vote. Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Cargie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Behennick?
Yes.
Motion, Pat, okay. Great. And again, thank you to Rosie and her team for a great audit, once again. So far, so good. Okay, so let's move on for the mid-year budget and financial report. Eric will be presenting this, so maybe we could turn your thing to you?
Yeah, well, my, because we're having IT issues with the network on my laptop, so I got on my phone here, so.
Oh, okay, fair enough.
John, John Pape, if you can let me in, I'm trying to dial in here through my phone. There we go. Let's see here. Uh, start video. All right, all right. Maybe not the best look for me, but quite frankly, it's usually never a good look. All right, so Sarah, Rosie and I have put together a mid-year budget presentation. You know, when we approved the budget back in April, it was March and April, it was obviously a wild time. And so we, our advice and recommendation to the board was, let's approve the budget, but it's going to change undoubtedly, once we have more data, more information. And so we're just arriving at the six-month point. So what we're going to do is just walk you through where we're at right now. The good news is, we're actually in a better position today than we were when we started the budget process in terms of looking at less use of reserves going into the year. So we'll talk about that and walk you through that. We'll be happy to answer any questions. So Sarah, if you could advance the presentation, I appreciate that. Thank you. So what you're seeing right here is the impact on the revenues. And so Rosie and Kiki have gone through the budget and looked at the areas where we're seeing the greatest amount of impact. And so the first four you're seeing right now are on sales tax, income tax, youth tax, and restaurant tax. So, and nothing that we'll share with you ultimately will be a surprise. I'm pretty confident in that. So sales tax is down. Both are 1% from the state, which is the first row. And then the second row is the non-home rule sales tax. Now, that non-home rule is down at a greater percentage. And the reason for that is because the, our larger, largest producer of sales tax is on grocery stores. And so every transaction at a grocery store takes the 1%, the state sales tax, 1% that we get, but does not take the second, the non-home rule sales tax. So if you go, so for example, if you go to Whole Foods and buy groceries, you're taxed at 2.25%. And we get 1% of that. If you buy shoes at DSW, If you buy shoes at DSW, you're taxed at 10%, and the village gets 2% of that. So that's why there's a difference. We're seeing less on the, bigger decrease on the non-home rule sales tax, primarily because the non-grocery store retailers are not producing as much sales. The state income tax number is down slightly. Again, these, if you recall from our budget proceeding, state income tax, those projections we rely on from the Illinois Municipal League, they've been very good throughout the years in terms of providing guidance and direction to municipalities on a per capita basis on what that should be. So that's the updated figure you see there, which is a slight decrease. One revenue source that's been good for us has been the use tax. That reflects the internet purchases. So Amazon, et cetera, has come through very well for the village and municipalities all over the state. So you're seeing an increase there. And then our places of eating tax, or known as our restaurant tax, is also seeing a decrease as well. The other big bucket of revenues that have come in less than expected are our parking, daily parking for Metro, our permit parking, and then police tickets. Obviously, the police were not writing a lot of tickets and violations, whether they be parking-related, moving violations, anything of that effect earlier on in the fiscal year with the pandemic. And then we'll talk a little bit about some of the revenue we're getting from the federal government. When it's all said and done, we're going to see about a decrease of just over $400,000 in less revenue than we had anticipated in the, at the beginning of the fiscal year. Sarah, if you can hit the next slide? So in netted into that, though, is we are getting, we're fortunate enough to get two, two buckets of money. One is from the county through the CARES Act. So this is money that is running through, coming from the federal government, running through the county. The county had created its own formula to determine what each municipality's share would or would not be. And so for the Village of River Forest, our share of that is $100,942. So we've made application for that funding. The finance department has submitted that request, and now we are just waiting for that money to be transmitted back to us. And then we were also able to make application to FEMA for various COVID-related expenses. We have also made that application. I know Rosie's working with the liaison over at FEMA to, you know, answer questions that they may have. We're anticipating right now that reimbursement to be around $60,000. So of the, you know, 418 or so thousand dollars in less revenue, we've netted into that, that revenue that we're getting from FEMA and from the county. Next slide. So again, yeah, the, the total revenues that were down would be about 418,000. On the expenditure side, staffs in the department has been instructed to limit their non-essential expenditures. And then we've made some changes in terms of making reductions to expenditure. So on the salary and benefit savings side, the, one of the major positions that we have not filled to date is the deputy chief of police position. So that will remain vacant for the rest of the year. And then just throughout the course of the year, you know, various employees will leave service and new employees will come on. When that happens, there is a, a net change typically in the budget, which usually, usually not exclusively or always, but most of the time results in a savings for the village. So what you're seeing there of the $375,000 approximately is that net difference, including the deputy chief position, that will go and remain unfilled for the remainder of the fiscal year. And then the other big thing that we did this year that we gave you heads up back during the COVID, the initial COVID response, was not making our transfer savings. So if you go back and you look in your audit that we just went through, you would see in the financial statements, the amount of money that we have reserved for capital equipment, capital equipment replacement. The money that we have in there currently represents 102% of our needed, needed revenue. So we're in excellent shape there. So what we're recommending is that we're going to take a year off from making that transfer. I would anticipate we may take a second year off as well, based on, you know, next year's budget. Because we've had such good financial discipline through the years, and we've built up a good reserve in that particular account, we're able to have this type of flexibility. That's why we've worked so hard to do that. I should also note that the departments have done a great job as well in terms of managing their fleet. We're able to put off a lot of replacement of vehicles this year. And then even as you saw on the consent agenda tonight, although no one likes having an emergency expense, including the fire chief, by going ahead and redoing that pump and making some adjustments to that, we're able to extend the life of that fire engine a couple more years, more than we had anticipated. So there are some silver linings throughout all that. The one thing that we didn't plan for this year that we were, we'll talk about here in a little greater length, is our public safety pension obligation, which has also increased for this fiscal year. Next slide. So each year, the pension funds, along with the village, engage with a third-party actuary to determine what the contributions for the village will be for the year. And then that feeds into our discussion here that will take place in November when we set the property tax levy for 2020, which is collected in 2021, and then go rolls into, into future years. We saw a significant increase to what we had already budgeted as an increase for this year's pension obligations. And none of them, fortunately or unfortunately, I guess depending on your perspective, were in the village's control. And so let's just walk through those real quickly. One, the actuary made some changes in their assumptions on their mortality tables. So simply put, there are assumptions built into the funding requirements that essentially determine and make an assumption on when someone's going to die, when they're going to retire, et cetera. So those were updated, and in doing so, increased our unfunded liability. The second point, we'll talk about this in the, in the subsequent slide too, in terms of some of the benefits that'll come, that'll be forthcoming. But at least in the short term, when the pension consolidation law took place, there were increases to the benefits for the tier-two employees. So those are increases to their benefits hit our unfunded liability in this year, and those are reflected, and again, that was at the state level. And those were reflected in what we had to come, had to put forward in terms of our pension payment for this fiscal year. And then lastly, and we've been the, this is just bad luck. We've been the victim of this a couple of times. You know, your investment returns are measured on the end of your fiscal year. So whatever the market is on 4/30 of that year, factor into the following, and factor into that actuarial report. We all know where the market was on 4/30. So unfortunately, for this year, we're going to have to pay a little bit more. Those amounts are smoothed out over a five-year period, but we did see somewhat of an increase. We're hopeful that next year, when the market, and the market has already come back, assuming it stays in a relatively similar position, we would see hopefully the inverse of that in terms of that negative effect on what we have to contribute to the pension funds. Next slide. So in terms of our pension obligations, and this is in the memo, the, the important point to note is that when the, the state legislature agreed to the pension consolidation, there's going to be a significant amount of savings to the village and to all Illinois municipalities. And that's going to come through consolidating the investments. That's the, really the main takeaway there. And as you can see, you know, they're anticipating additional returns of $1 million per day or more. And, and those numbers are somewhat staggering. Once, and, and the hope here is that over time, here in the next couple of years, once that consolidation gets up and running, the Village of River Forest and every other municipality in the state would start to see the benefit of that consolidation. So the bad news is in the short term, we're going to have to pay a little bit more. But the good news is in the long term, we're going to see a greater benefit to that. It's not uncommon for IMRF, which is the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, which includes the non-public safety employees. You know, some years with their funds, you know, they're, they're seeing, you know, $15 to $20 billion in investment returns. And certainly, it's not apples to apples, but you can, you can see them, you can, you can envision the magnitude of the, of the savings that we'll see because we'll be getting additional money from those returns. Next slide. And then this is my, kind of my, my go-to chart that I always just like to show. And I, you know, use this as an example in the end of our budget presentation every year. And what this illustrates for you is your property tax levy. And how over the last 10 or so, eight to 10 years, your property tax levy, the amount of that money going to the public safety pensions has increased, and an amount going to the general fund or just for general operations has decreased. And so we continue to work diligently and very hard as a staff to present you balanced budgets, year in and year out. I don't think I've been, there's been a year, I know I've been here where we haven't been able to balance the budget, you know, using either our revenues or strategically using reserves. And so it really says a lot to the staff that we're able to keep doing this year in and year out despite, you know, some of the challenges. And again, the hope here is in a couple of years, that those numbers will start to change a little bit. The colors of the red and the blue will decrease a little bit because we'll be getting more investment returns through the state consolidation. Next slide. So again, so the good news here, again, for the end of the year, and you see the area that circled, you know, we had already planned, you had strategically used reserves this year for our budget for one-time expenses. That's still the case, but the good news is that we're going to be using them less. So you're actually seeing a reduction in your, in your bottom line here. Yep, from 424,000 to 341,000, less in reserves, which gives us a little bit more flexibility moving forward next year, which, you know, we always can appreciate. And we're, and if you were to take out, honestly, if you were to take out the increase to the public safety pension, that, again, we really had no control over, we would actually have a balanced budget this year. But all in all, we're, we're in really good financial position. We have good, we still have good reserves in the general fund. As you heard Kimberly Marshall talk about, the general fund reserve increased from last year. We have a significant amount of money in our capital equipment replacement fund. We have money also through our insurance funds that we use strategically as well. When we see savings, those get parked over there and reinvested. So there's a lot, still a lot of really good things going well for the Village of River Forest from a financial perspective. Next slide. And again, these are just the conclusions. Finances continue to be in a strong position. We'll continue to limit non-essential spending, continue to monitor everything and report back should there be any changes. The one thing I will also note to you baked into these projections, I'm recommending for the non-union staff, a 2% cost of living increase. There would be no, any, there wouldn't be any type of merit review or merit increases. It would just be a flat 2% across the board. And that would be implemented November 1st, and there would be no retroactivity. So it would give us an opportunity to recognize our non-union staff and the job that they have done. And essentially, they will have had a salary freeze for six months, but would allow us to do that. And those expenditure projections are included in what I presented to you this evening. So with that, before we move on to our other items on the agenda, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Eric, it's Bob. A question for you. On the revenue side of things, I know trails, I think you told me it trails behind with the, with the state on the sales tax. So these are your projections going out. How about any money from the state with the cannabis tax? Is that, where is that baked in, if you will?
Oh, well done, well, well done, thank you.
Good plan, word.
Good job. I'll let Rosie speak to that. We have been getting some of that money, and it is reserved for public safety purposes. But Rosie can speak to that further.
Yes, we, we, year to date, we're, we're at about just shy of 300, 3,000, not 300, $3,000. But we estimate probably getting, getting any, close to 7,000 for the year, where we budgeted 4,500. But those expenditures, or those revenues are, like Eric said, they're specific for either training, police events, or anything to do. You know, it has to be related to, you know, police-sponsored events or, or purposes.
Thanks. That cover, Rosie, could that cover like existing police programs?
I, I would, it's just the revenues have to be used for those expenditures, yes. It can be for already existing programs. So it's just, we can't use that revenue just for whatever we choose to use it on.
Right.
But for, for things we've budgeted for our general revenue, we can supplant that with the cannabis funds, correct? And then return that money to the general, general revenue?
Correct. The, the funds are already in the general fund also. So they're already accounted for in the general fund. If you look in the comprehensive annual report, you'll see we have, in the general fund, there's, there's an amount restricted for can, for that purpose within the general fund. So, but yes, we could switch out what we've already budgeted and for, for just regular training in police, whatever, to use this, these funds that we're receiving now. That answer?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Eric and Rosie, similarly, can you talk a little bit about revenues from the new fuel tax? There's something on page 290 of the report that says 432,000. That surprised me, but it would be.
Which reporter are you looking at?
Well, I, I guess just, can you talk about, similar to the cannabis tax, what are we getting in from the new gas?
We just, interesting, we, we just received our first payment on the local, you're talking about the three cents motor fuel tax? So.
Yeah, let's, maybe, let's, let's pause for a second. So just so we're clear, Trustee Brennan, there's two, really two new pots of, keep using pot, I gotta come up with better terminology.
Bucket.
Yeah, it's a bucket, thank you. So within the, the state, through the budget that they approved last year, had granted municipalities additional funds for MFT purposes, purposes. So MFT dollars went up. Then they have been sending us additional funds for capital reasons. And I think the village president has been sending you emails about working with IDOT and the IML to try to broaden what those funds are to be used for. So that's number two. And then number three is on July 1st, the village enacted its own motor fuel tax at three cents per gallon at our two gas stations. That money has just started to trickle in. So there's three items, I think, at play, and I just want to make sure we're answering the right, the right one.
Well, she asked for the 432,000, so that's got to be, I don't have it up.
Well, actually, what I, what I really meant was the newest one that we enacted, I guess it was in July, the three cent one. But you've explained it to me that that's, that's how we got to the three, the 432. That wasn't from the three cent tax. So what is, what is it that, that, Rosie, you were starting to say has just started to come in?
We received our first payment this month for July sales, and it was just shy of $1,700. So, I mean, we, we, our budget this year was for, was 25,000. So we're, we're probably be, be right around there. So not anything, but also, I don't know, you know, people may not be driving as much because of COVID, and so maybe we'll see, see once we get through the pandemic that we'll see a little increase in, in fuel purchase.
So let me just explain a little bit the second bucket. The, and I think it's like $120,000 if I'm correct, in that second bucket, Rosie, which is the capital money that IDOT, or was approved by the legislature governor, sent to IDOT.
For the bond fund?
Yeah, for the bond fund.
We've received two payments so far. We've received two payments of 122,000 each.
Okay, so sitting at basically $244,000. The way the policy is written for IDOT to approve us to spend that money doesn't give us any allowable way to spend it. So in other words, we got $244,000 that we can't spend. And so I. And so I, through my relationship with the IML, the Illinois Municipal League is advocating on our behalf with the IDOT, Illinois Department of Transportation, to change their policy to allow us as a municipality to use that money for reconstruction of alleys. Right now, IDOT's policy is saying that alley is not a public way when in fact it is. It's, it is a public way. So we are going back to IDOT through IML and I think we're gonna get success. I think they're gonna send out a circular letter, they being IDOT, a circular letter back to us indicating that alleys would be permissible in using that money for bondable projects.
Correct.
Kathy, can I ask? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Eric.
No, 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 I was just gonna finish, finish that thought, but go ahead, Trustee Brennan.
No, I just had a question.
Just, no, finish the thought.
No, I'd already forgot what it was.
Sorry.
Sorry. Go ahead, go ahead, Patty.
No, I just wanted to clarify. You were saying that, that we didn't have the mechanism to use that, those funds. Is that just specific to River Forest or other municipalities were in that same situation?
Yeah, well, similarly, if they're smaller, because IDOT wants to just use the money for like bondable big projects, like big bridges, you know, right roads.
Reconstruction type projects that have a useful life of thirteen years or more.
Right. So yeah, to answer your question specifically, yes, of course, smaller municipalities like us would have similar problems. Yes. We just hopped on it right away. I mean, as soon as we saw the way the policy was written, I mean, it was a no-brainer for me to, to get involved and get IML involved to advocate for smaller communities like River Forest.
Street resurfacing wouldn't be included in that? Doesn't street resurfacing last longer than thirteen years?
No, it, it depends on the specification that you would use. So you could get to that point where you would increase the specification, but then you're paying more-
Right.
-because you have a more of a, you know, a beefed up spec for the roadway. So, yeah, they, they, IDOT classifieds all those as maintenance projects and not as like reconstruction projects. So that's why we're hoping the, they'll look favorably upon the alley because the alleys, as you well know, have a much longer timeframe, a useful life associated with them. But many other municipalities are in the same way because most of the work we do is really for just street, maintenance projects, not like true recon, the big reconstruction work is typically handled on state roads and handled by IDOT anyhow.
All right.
Can you repeat the amount that's in that second bucket, that IDOT, the IDOT funds?
Was it two hundred and forty-four thousand, Rosie?
Right. But we have a, we have a commit, what's the fir, what's the full commitment, Rosie?
I, I believe it's close to seven hundred thousand, I, I thought.
I think you're right. That's, that was, was in my mind. I don't know the exact amount, Trustee Brennan, but it's in, it's in the vicinity of three quarters of a million dollars. And as they issue, the state issues bond payments for their projects, they're then peeling off those dollars back to the municipality using their formula.
So Katie, it's significant, totally significant over the course of the year?
Thanks.
Sure. No, good question. Thank you. Okay, well, what I'd like to say is one thank you to our village staff, Rosie, Eric, everyone, the chief, John. What this budget shows is almost, you know, miracle. Most municipalities, and I mean most municipalities, are struggling to find how to balance their budget with COVID-19 issues. I mean, Oak Park is considering a sixteen million dollar deficit. Chicago is in the billion, I think. Mayor Leiford said 1.2 billion. I mean, could you imagine? We are sitting here at a balanced budget, still with enormous appropriate reserves in our funds, significant funds in the capital equipment replacement fund and still adequate at a hundred percent for our capital improvement program. That's significant. I mean, that is a significant and unbelievable feat. And so I knew we could do this and I, here's why. Because the village board, you and I, and the board before you, put together solid financial policies. And with those, uh, solid financial policies, our staff has implemented against those policies. And so the combination of, you know, good board overview, again, between the board here and the board before you, I think created a good way forward. And I'm very happy to, to report this good news, this good financial news. Even the pension obligation, I think Eric, when you gave that, you know, the, the blue, red, green, it's exactly the chart that I went to and said, the pension obligation that we owe as a percentage of our general fund is growing and that is concerning, but that's not just River Forest, that is everyone. In fact, the bigger, the more problem that, the bigger municipalities will have. And so with the pension consolidation effort that's going on in Springfield and through the IML, that you will, you're right, it will kind of reverse a little bit or come down a little bit and hopefully give us some relief. And of course, you know, some of the things that we're getting from Springfield, like the MTF funds and other revenues, that is important for us to function. But you can see, I mean, the, the, every bit counts in our revenue. And so when we make a decision to remove a piece of revenue, it will have an effect, it's a cause and effect in our budget. And so we have to be cognizant that every piece of revenue that we look at or any policies that we pass to create revenue or not create revenue has an effect on our, on our budget. So again, I, I, from my point of view and on behalf of the village board, I mean, I want to say thank you, teaching one of you for doing a phenomenal job of keeping our community strong financially and otherwise actually, and providing the services that, of course, our residents expect. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we need any, no action? Just a-
Yeah, we'll do. At some point, we'll be sending a budget amendment back to the board for your approval. You know, it'll, it'll be a consent agenda item, so any changes that we talked about will be reflected in there, but there's no action tonight.
Yeah, okay. Very good. Thank you so much. Very good. Nice job, job well done. So let's move on to item nine C. If I can, can we get a screen here?
Yeah, we're gonna continue on and we're, the power-
Oh, you're gonna continue on this?
It's just, we're gonna-
Okay, go ahead then. And we need a motion and a, oh, we don't.
No, we don't.
We're just giving you directions.
Yep, yeah, just looking for direction tonight.
Yep, excuse me.
So Jeff, John and I will walk through a couple of these items. There's, you know, three, what we're seeing, three large infrastructure projects that we would like your consensus on in terms of moving forward. We've talked about some of these previously. One of them is new, but we'll walk through these tonight and then kind of talk about, you know, how much they cost, how we plan to fund them, and then certainly answer any questions that you may have. So with that, let's hit the next slide. And this is the advanced metering infrastructure. We've talked about this in the budget and John Anderson will jump on and walk through with you what this is all about and what it does.
Okay. Thanks, Eric. So I'll just let you guys know what we do now for getting water meter reads. What we do is we have a water operator go throughout the village, go street to street and gets the reads once per month. What advanced metering infrastructure would do, it would get those reads on a on-demand basis, so those could come every hour. People could access their water meter reads whenever they'd like. They could get, they could even set up email alerts if they have irregular usage. But in order to do that project, we'd need to replace about two-thirds of our water meters and MXUs. The MXUs are what are connected to the water meters that give off the radio reads for picking up what the meter says. And so all this would improve customer service and employee efficiency. We wouldn't have to have an employee drive throughout the village to pick up reads every month. And if, if anyone wanted to see how their water usage is being used at any given time, they could log in and do that on a real-time basis. The village would eventually be able to move to a monthly billing if we so choose. And the project could also include leak detection. Leak detection both for the customer to be able to know if any irregular, regular usage shows up. And then also on the village's side, there can be leak detection equipment that could be attached that would be listening at any given moment if there's a leak on the system side. And that can be built into these types of systems. And because of the amount of meters that would have to be replaced and the MXUs and the antennas that would have to be put up to pick up all of these signals, this would be a project that would be about 1.1 million dollars.
And the other, the other thing, and John mentioned this too, that comes in, into play here that's, is important, is really the customer service side of things. So not only does there allow for a tie-in for residents to go in and see their usage and their consumption, we can set the system up in such a way that if we start noticing abnormalities in people's usage, we can get an alert on that quickly. You know, our water meter and finance staff really does a great job in terms of identifying those issues when they happen. Challenge though is there's a lag to that. So by the time they run a report at the end of the month and look at that, you could have thirty, of the thirty, forty-five, sixty days in some cases where that issue or leak is taking place. And so the water, the meter, if you will, continues to run, which can provide challenges because ultimately the resident then has to pay for that. And then we're talking about situations that happen on private property. They're not village-caused issues or anything like that, but they can still be fairly expensive if you have, you know, the leaky toilet, you know, I, I've gone through a million of them in my career where people have a toilet that runs non-stop and then they get a bill that is astronomical, you know, things like that. You know, we're trying to catch, catch ahead of time. And then the other big component to that that John mentioned was also the, the leak detection. We've been continuing to evaluate and it's a technology that is rapidly changing and evolving, so we haven't made any, recommended any purchases on that at this point because we're letting the technology catch up a little bit. But in the times we have used it, we have been able to catch leaks that are, the ones you just can't see to the eye, that are underground where the water is seeping into the ground area. We have been able to use that technology to save ourselves a considerable amount of money.
So Eric, oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Patty.
I do have a few questions. I think the, the efficiency and the benefits to residents would be great as, as a resident who had a leak in a sprinkler system, having that detection would have been nice, so I do appreciate that. But, so my question though, a couple, why is it for one that we only need to replace two-thirds of the meters as opposed to all the meters would be one question? And then another question would be in terms of lifespan of the equipment, what they anticipated, when we would potentially be looking at replacement of this system? And then third question would be in terms of costs, obviously having the efficiency for staff is good, but do you have a sense from a cost analysis, with the cost of putting this system in, what the savings might be compared to our current system? Does that make sense? So I know I just gave you a lot.
No, that's fine. So let's go back to the first question was why only a one-third versus two-thirds. So Mark, I'll answer this one. Mark and John, Mark Janopoulos and John Anderson have done a good job in terms of making sure that when we've been replacing meters on a regular basis, if you look at your water budget for the year, we bake into that a normal replacement schedule for meters because they do have a useful life, right? So in that, we've been, as we've been replacing them, we've been replacing them with the latest and greatest technology, envisioning that we would go down this road at some point. So instead of having to re-replace those, they're already replaced with the MXUs, et cetera. John, I'll let you speak to the second question, more about useful life of the meters.
Right. So as, as you were saying, Eric, we replace meters after they're 20 years old. So the meters, once they get to be 20 years old, then they would be, have triggered to be replaced. And the MXUs, those don't last quite as long, but it depends on the battery capabilities. Sometimes alls you have to do is replace the batteries in those. Those usually would be more the 10-year range as far as the MXUs. Then the other equipment, that would be installation of antennas that would last quite a while. And then you would also have to keep up with the software, software upgrades, that kind of thing. Don't have exact timeframes on, on that, but that's basically what we're looking at.
Yeah. And the, the other thing to jump on with that too is we are certainly not the first town to go down this road. There are several that have done this. And actually, a good colleague of mine, or the village of Glencoe, they're doing this right now, where they're rolling out all the water, all the water meter replacements. The one thing that we can't quantify, but I suspect there would be some savings, is as meters get older, they become less efficient just because of what they're made of, their gears, right? So there had been companies out there several years ago that were doing replacement projects that were based on the savings that they would say they would find you. They would run, you know, an analysis with an algorithm on how many meters you have, how old they are, they would spot check them, and they would say this system would be able to pay for itself in so many years just from replacement of newer meters. So we haven't done that necessarily. I, I can't tell you, that would require some third-party help to put that together, but we do know we would see some improvement in terms of, you know, efficiencies there. I just can't quantify it for you right now. Eric, are you saying that as the meters get older, they become less accurate, meaning that they, they're undercounting the water being used? Yes. And it may not be dramatic, but you know, even if you round up, you know, you round the decimal point, you know, eventually the, you know, there's a movie about that, I can't remember which office space, that's right. Yeah, that's right. Where the, you know, they round the number up and, you know, and so it's the same, it's the same theory here.
And so this 1.1 million would include installation, equipment and installation then?
Yeah, would include the, you would have the meters, the installation of the meters, and then the last part would be the, the mesh that would be put in over town to, the wireless mesh to allow for the meters to talk to each other and talk back to the village.
About how many antennas are we thinking that we would need over River Forest, Eric?
I don't know at this time. We would need, we would engage with a consultant to help us do all that work. And so John and I have been working on putting the RFP together for that. Once we have a consultant engaged, they would determine what that feasibility is. This wouldn't entail canceling a position with the water department, correct? I'm sorry, Trustee Karji, could you say that one more time? If we were to put the system in, we wouldn't be losing a headcount in the water department, correct? Correct. But there's some, the person that's currently doing the meter reading, is there something else that's not being done because that person is doing the meter reading? Yeah, so the meter readings typically take place on a monthly basis, but they're the two, we have two water operators. Those two individuals certainly are engaged in, just in terms of maintaining the overall plant and the pumping station, handling all the EPA requ, or the IE EPA requirements with the, you know, daily testing and things like that. And then they're out meeting with residents and working through their issues. So whenever a resident comes in and says, my water bill's high, I have an issue, we also send them out to, and deploy them to help those residents out to really provide a high level of customer service and addressing whatever that issue might be. John, have I missed anything?
Well, no, the only thing I would add is they, they handle regular public works operations as well. They chip in on snow plowing, leaf collection. Oh, they're, they wear multiple hats, so yeah, they're, they're needed across the board.
And where would these antennas go? What do you anticipate they would be set up?
I, yeah, I don't have the answer to that question at this point. We would certainly get that information. I, I don't even-
When you get closer to, I assume you have to go and look at, I mean, right, there's still a lot of work for you to-
Oh, yeah, no, we're, we're just really on the front end. So those are all good questions and we'll, we'll have the answers to all those questions once we engage someone to help us with that.
Which will be an additional cost to this 1.1 then?
No, the, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but the consultancy was- No, the, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but the consultancy was put in there, right?
Right, this is everything, all in.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Eric, can you talk about briefly if this water bond is to be issued, how will it impact our budget situation?
Yeah, so those, sure, happy to answer that question. So this bond would be paid for out of the water fund. You know, we've been very good over the last several years at maintaining our water increases to the exact minimum of what we would, what we need. The only increases that we really pass through have been through the city of Chicago, so we don't, you know, necessarily lose money. But we haven't raised the villages' portion of the water rate in several years. So we do have some flexibility in there, I believe, in terms of kind of what we call coverage, how much money is available to cover the debt service. So I do believe we have some flexibility there. We're probably looking at a nominal water rate increase in a subsequent year, which would be needed in part to pay for this improvement. But we won't know exactly until we get, you know, further down the line, we engage with the consultant, we do the due diligence, we pin down our numbers, and then we can come to you sometime next year and give you a further update and say, "Okay, here, here's where we're at, this is what we're looking at, this is what the budget is," and all that will come together nicely at that time.
So Eric, I guess Eric and John, you mentioned that as the meters wear out, you replace them, and you're, you've already been replacing them with smarter meters that would work with this new system?
Yes.
If we, if we decided not to go forward with this whole advanced water meter, meter reading project, at what point will we, changing out the old meters to smart meters and have the whole village covered with smart meters just by virtue of replacing old meters?
Just for the natural course of replacement?
Yeah, did you say, did you say we've, we've already covered a third of the village?
Yep, yep. John, do you have a sense of what that would be? Like if we were just kept on our normal path, how many years it would take to get to?
Yeah, you know, I would, it would be a, a rough guesstimate because we don't replace the same amount of meters every year. It's based off of age. I mean, if I had to take a stab at it, it'd be another, probably another ten, over 10 years.
But that raises the issue that you're really never going to catch up if you, if, if the life of them is 10 years and you're, you continuously replace them, you'll never stop doing it, in essence.
Right, so the thought, the thought is, some, some villages wait until all of their water meters, they, they buy them all at the same time and then they replace them all at the same time. Well, that's a huge cost, a huge lump sum cost. So what we've done historically here is replace them as they're over 20 years old. That way we don't have a giant cost. It's, it's, it's manageable from year to year.
I'm sorry, I thought I heard 10 years, my mistake.
No, I think what, right, what, what I, what I think I was answering was when all of those meters become so-called smart meters, that would be another 10 years out.
John, if we were to implement this and two-thirds of the meters, aren't we sort of facing that same sort of bulge replacement 10 years from now or however long the, the meters last?
Well, that, that's kind of the trade-offs. You, you, in order to get to this, you need to have the technology to get you there, and that would require the replacement of roughly two-thirds of the meters. But, you know, 20, over 20 years from now, those could get old and those would be older and then you'd have to replace the meters themselves anyway. It, it's just a little bit of a trade-off to get to that point.
But right now, we're able to spread the cost of that out. But now if we replaced two-thirds all at the same time, we now have the same sort of replacement bulge, you know, cost, huge cost that we know about. Instead of being able to allocate it over a number of years, in 20 years, we now have to replace two-thirds of the meters again.
Well, right, but if, if you do it at this point, at least you would be able to plan for that. You would know that it's coming and maybe you would just budget accordingly, knowing that that's coming down the line. But again, it would be a trade-off between whether you want to make the jump to the advanced metering infrastructure right away or not, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a fair question. You know, we keep in mind our water funds are enterprise funds, right? So we, we look at them more in a business mindset than we would maybe some of our other governmental funds. And so this is a part of the, kind of, I'll, I'll say the cost of doing business, right? We want to make sure we're using our, committed to the best technology where possible. There are definitely customer service improvements that we'll see as a part of this. And to John's point, it's not that the expense would be unknown, we would start forecasting that in, and certainly in future years. We, we would know that we would have that, you know, that expense later on in, later on in life.
I don't know, to me, I think, I mean, the amount of phone calls we get that residents wish we could catch some of their water, you know, leaks is, is a lot, a lot. So this, this seems to be a reasonable-
So yeah, so the next step here would be to finalize the RFP for a consultant to help us with that, bring that back, we approve that, get going on that, and then the consultant would come back at a later date, sometime probably next year, with their findings and a lot of the good questions that the trustees had asked.
Yeah.
Eric, would it be possible to get more information about these antennas, the number, the height, and whatever other municipalities have dealt with in terms of these antennas or so, so that we could look into that before doing the RFP?
Yeah, we could, we could certainly do that. I can, we can reach out to, like I said, Glencoe would probably be a good, they're a little bit smaller than us, but not by that much, to see what their infrastructure looks like, to give you some sort of sense of conceptually what that is. We could do that, yep.
I think that'd be really helpful. I, I can, I mean, I have no idea if these antennas buzz and if they bother residents, how, how tall they are. I, I'm not really comfortable voting to go forward on this until we get a little bit more information about that.
Well, Katie, we're not voting on it, we're just giving them direction to say, "Here, is this something that you feel it would be beneficial to the residents?" Not to say that, that what your questions aren't good, and maybe they can come back with answers, but right now, and we should, I mean, I think Katie's question is a good one, can we get some of those questions answered earlier before an RFP goes out so that, you know, we're not asking the questions at the backend? I, I think that's a good one. But tonight, we're just kind of saying, "Yep, this sounds reasonable, it sounds something that could be, benefit our residents, and we probably should continue to look into it."
We can find that out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so that was AMI. Now Jeff Loscher, our village engineer, will jump on and we'll talk a little bit about the Keystone flooding project. So if you recall, earlier this summer, we engaged with Burke and Associates to study the issue of the On Street flooding up at the Keystone Division area a little bit further. They have done that, and I'm really proud of both Jeff and John here, where they went back and also looked at other options that might be available that would provide us the same level of coverage and support to this area. And so that's what we're presenting tonight, that I think checks all those boxes, and Jeff will walk you through the technical details on that.
Sure. So obviously, as Eric mentioned, we had some more street flooding issues on the 1100 block of Keystone earlier this year. So staff kind of dug in right out of the gate, took care of some kind of low-hanging fruit, if you will, made sure those, those sewers got cleaned out. There were some root obstructions in there we took care of, we got the sewer line, so we kind of handled all the easier stuff, if you will, to make sure that is not a recurring problem. So what we were left with was trying to kind of go back with Christopher Burke Engineering and try to figure out a more long-term solution that would help mitigate or completely resolve this issue and, and prevent it from occurring in the future. So what, what the, what we kind of ended up with was the idea of tying some of these drainage, the catch basins, into a nearby MWRD sewer. Typically, the MWRD sewers are very large, six-foot, eight-foot in diameter. Unfortunately, the one that's nearest Keystone and Division is only two feet in diameter, which when compared with the nine-inch sewer that's in there already is, is still kind of leaps and bounds better than, than what we're dealing with, but still some, we still felt some need to kind of take a belt and suspenders approach and, and give ourselves as much flexibility as we can when we try to address this. We don't want to jump in too far if we don't need to, but by the same token, we still kind of wanted to go back and forth with Burke a little bit about giving ourselves the flexibility to pivot down the line if our first step isn't quite enough, or rather quite sufficient enough to address the problem. We've kind of given ourselves some, some room to move and continue building upon where we start. So Sarah, actually, if you could give me that next slide, I think that'll help. This is a overhead shot of, you see the intersection there, Division, Keystone's kind of on the right-hand side there. So kind of Plan A, if you will, which is, which is really where we're kind of proposing to start, is to basically reroute those two catch basins at Keystone and Division over to, as you can see that red line, that's where it would tie into the MWRD line. It would carry the stormwater from just those two catch basins west down Division and then cross north across Division, and then where that red line stops is, is at the MWRD sewer. We had initially talked to Burke, the idea out of the gate was to include all of the catch basins on Keystone between Division and Thomas, so the entire 1100 block. We had hoped we could tie all of those in and connect them to this MWRD line, but Christopher Burke Engineering had some concerns about the capacity in that two-foot diameter MWRD sewer. And so they had concerns that there wasn't enough capacity and staff, I mean, we can certainly understand that, that's, that's what we're paying them to do, but we also, on a more realistic basis, recognize the substantial lack of capacity that we're currently dealing with and the fact that all of this water is currently going down a nine-inch pipe anyways. So the idea, like I said, was to kind of give ourselves a lot of room to grow in the future, even though we're starting off on a slightly smaller scale here. The bulk of the issue seems to be around the intersection of Division and Keystone. Plan A would be to connect these two catch basins to the MWRD sewer. If it looks like that works, but we still experience flooding a little bit further south, we would be installing these, this infrastructure, as you see here, at a depth and of a size that would be adequate to potentially connect more of those catch basins on the 1100 block and convey more stormwater north along these same lines. So that would be kind of Plan B if, if it becomes necessary and looks like it would work. And then ultimately, if, if capacity in the MWRD sewer, if that capacity just isn't there and we need to ultimately find a more substantial outlet, we would be installing this infrastructure again at a size and at a depth that would enable us to connect all of those catch basins on the 1100 block of Keystone and convey this pipe, install more pipe rather, further up, instead of just tying into this MWRD sewer, we would be able to extend it up to Greenfield to tie into the NSMP project on Greenfield that was installed back in 2014, 2015. So again, it looks like a relatively small improvement here, and I know the problem has persisted for quite some time, but we don't want to spend more money than we have to certainly, and if we do start small, we think we're kind of doing it in a way that gives us a lot of room to grow in the future. So Sarah, if you could go back one more for me, I would appreciate it. I think that last bullet point talked about the general price point, looking at about $200,000 for kind of that, that Plan A approach that we just discussed.
And so the other thing to point out too, by doing the, the Plan A approach, you're taking the, the crux of majority of that flooding happens at Keystone and, and Division. It does happen a little bit farther south at Thomas as well. By taking those two catch basins offline and sending them right to the MWRD, that's going to then relieve those catch basins at Thomas where they're not going to be competing with all that water at Keystone and Division. So that's going to provide the immediate relief to a little bit farther south, right, for Keystone Avenue. And then the other thing too, you know, just to point out then along those lines, again, as we pointed out, the, that line was gone, was rotted and, and cleared as well and then lined. So you also have a reinforced infrastructure with the existing infrastructure that's going to kick in and work as well. So we see a lot of benefits here, we see that, we believe that this is going to provide a, a good level and increased level of coverage for the residents up in that neck of the woods.
Hey, I'm Eric, it's Bob, if I can jump in. Jeff, thank you very much, I got a couple of questions. Sarah, could you flip to the map, please?
Hey, Bob, we can't see you. Are you purposely non-videoling? Now, there you go.
So the, the two catch basins then are right at the corner that would feed to the, to this MWRD basin?
Yes.
Okay. So do we know how many catch basins are along Keystone between Thomas and Division?
Obviously, we've got these ones at Division, I know we have more at Thomas. I think there's, there's either one kind of pair mid-block or there's two pairs mid-block, but we're either talking a total of six or eight.
Okay, so that's why, I, I figured it was kind of a low number. So, so then, if I could, so the pitch of the street, you know, it, it does, it does go in a couple of houses, so, you know, as you know from being out here when it's flooded. But the pitch of the street down there, is it more towards Division or is it back to the south towards Thomas?
I think if we go back to the topo, one of the first things Christopher Burke Engineering did was to kind of do a topographic survey of this entire area, and actually I think they carried it pretty far south as well. There's, there's kind of a bowl shape, if you will, up around Division, which is why we see a good bit of pounding there. I know we've, obviously we've got some low spots a little further south around those catch basins, they're, you know, naturally at the low point of the roadway, but I think the bigger low-lying area, the, the bigger tributary area was up around Division Street.
And, and I would agree with you from what I've seen. So, so I'm just trying to put this all together because I think you guys have done some great work, and I think the neighbors who live down over there are going to be happy, and obviously they're neighbors of mine. But I mean, so if you look, if you think about the rainstorm we had, I don't know if it was in May or June, so with this system in place, it would start taking the water off of Keystone. What, what impact then does the current system have? Would they work simultaneous to, to kind of alleviate that problem? I, you know, I know it was kind of a slow, it was kind of a slow drain in that one storm we had. So do we kind of have, you know, to your point, belt and suspenders here, we've got this system, and then we could start alleviating whatever water's on the street using the old system?
Yeah, I mean, those other catch basins are still tied into the existing sewer that runs down, south down Keystone. Part of the problem is that they, that existing pipe down Keystone is only nine inches in diameter.
Right.
That's handling all the rest of those catch basins and currently handling that low-lying area of Division as well. So just by sheer virtue of separating those two catch basins up by Division, we're taking a lot of water out of that, you know, existing system, if you will, and just providing more capacity within that pipe to handle those other areas. So again, the, you know, the idea here is we get some of this water, get it off the road right at the onset of the storm event, get it into that MWRD sewer, even if there are capacity issues there, hopefully we've already solved the flooding issue prior to a capacity issue occurring. You know, we've gotten the water off of the road right out of the gate, we've got some extra capacity within this pipe that we can store some water underground, and then, you know, theoretically, those other catch basins would drain a lot better due to the fact that we've removed the root obstructions, we've lined the sewers, and now there's less water trying to feed through that pipe as well.
Great, thank you for answering my questions.
Jeff, it's Erica, and I apologize for any background noise you might hear, but do you anticipate with the MWRD sewer, that the addition of water that would be coming from these catch basins or in your Plan B or additional plans, you know, if you were to go to Greenfield, how that would impact those sewers with those, would there be flooding to neighbors because of that then? What's the potential for creating other problems if we begin to make these connections?
Sure, that's a great question. So first and foremost, one thing I kind of glossed over, MWRD is, is essentially a big combined sewer. So anytime you tie anything into a combined sewer, you have, you, you run the potential for- So anytime you tie anything into a combined sewer, you have, you you run the potential for sewer backup. You know, M W R D is part of, they they feed into the TARP system and and we've all seen where, you know, combined sewer overflows occur because the M W R D system is at or or past capacity. That certainly is a, and this was Christopher Burke Engineering's concern here. And the last thing we want to do is make another connection here to it and then suddenly have sewer backup through these catch basins, creating a bigger problem. So the first thing we would do to prevent that is to install uh check valve, sewer check valve. So the water from these catch bases would be able to flow west and then north into the M W R D sewer. But should a backflow uh event occur, a check valve would kind of be enacted, if you will, and would prevent any of the M W R D water from coming back up this pipe and out of the catch basins. So that's that's one potential uh adverse impact that we're already kind of thinking of and planning around. To your point about creating additional problems within the M W R D system, I don't really see a whole lot of concern there. This this M W R D pipe, it continues west on Division a little bit just to Thatcher and then it flows south to essentially Thatcher and Chicago. And there are a few different pipes that come together there. With that said, I don't know that there are really any other system or um any other pipes that tie into it. This twenty-four inch pipe that we're trying to tie into, I think what it really is, is an older, um kind of an antiquated remnant of an M W R D system that that didn't require ten and eight foot diameter pipes back in the day. And they just never really took it offline. So um you know, all of their other pipes are are perfectly suited to handle much larger rain events. But but I I don't, I don't foresee this additional water tying in here really causing much of a problem other than the sewer backflow, which, like I said, we've already kind of tried to work around and and prevent from occurring in the first place.
Is Water Rec already agreed to let us tie into this line?
Yes, in concept, they, there's already, so if you recall, these sewers in on this eleven hundred block of Keystone are separated. So um even though the storm sewer flows south down the middle of Keystone, there are two sanitary sewers in the parkways that flow north to Division. And then right below this red line, you can see kind of a black line that flows west, it kind of goes in the same path here. That's the sanitary sewer. It already ties into the M W R D sewer. So we're kind of piggybacking off of that connection and the M W R D has agreed, since it's not a quote new connection, they've agreed, and again, in concept, to to let us um kind of make this new connection because it's really not a new connection. We're just uh kind of changing an existing connection, if you will.
All right, um okay, great questions, uh thank you so much, um and a good explanation, Jeff. I, you know, I I I hope, I think it sounds like we have consensus to give you direction to go ahead and you know, mo- move unless somebody tells me differently.
I have, I have another question.
Yeah, go ahead, Katie.
You talked about this summer after after that flooding event and the neighbors were upset. We did some analysis and we rotted out and um cleaned out and relined the existing pipe. What's the likelihood that that work that we've already done is going to alleviate significant percentage of the flooding that these neighbors complain about?
I mean, it it's certainly possible. The hope, the hope is that it did address, you know, at least a good portion of that. You know, some of those road obstructions were pretty substantial. Uh you know, I was talking to Mark Genopolis. I've been here about eight years, he's been here about thirty some years. They were some of the more substantial blockages that we've seen. So yes, and that's a fair question. I mean, I think we did take care of of, you know, good, a good portion of this, a good chunk of it i- is resolved. But that's not to say we don't get a seventy-five year um year rain event next spring and still still see some degree of flooding at those catch basins. Uh again, I I kind of go back to those, you know, that nine inch pipe, that's one of the smaller pipes out of all of our sewer network in River Forest. And it's certainly not the only area we have nine inch pipe, but um that's as small as we get because it's generally pretty inadequate for uh flow. We've lined the sewer, we've removed all the road obstructions, but we also sometimes see road obstructions creep through where each home connects, where each home has a sewer that connects to this main sewer, if you will. And even though we don't have it on this eleven hundred block because the sewers are separated, further south, we have that. And sometimes we see road infiltration at those connections. We we can only clear out the main and sometimes we still get pretty substantial ones coming through those connections. So we very well could end up in it, you know, clear, we, even if we cleared it every year, we could still end up in that same boat. So um you know, if the board elected to, we could certainly take a a wait and see approach and and see how much of a benefit that provides. This is, this is the next step, though.
Well, I, in my opinion, I I think we should move forward. I mean, I think uh the money isn't substantial and it is, this is what we do, right? And we do infrastructure uh for our residents. And um I think we've spent a a, you know, a lot of time uh discussing this. And given that we have a better solution, um or at least a least a less expensive solution, um and I'd be in favor of moving forward.
Jeff, I have a
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
Well, I'm trying to look for consensus here. I mean, I mean, I I think we should move forward. I think it's the right thing to do for those residents on Keystone.
I just have a quick question about clearing the pipes. Jeff, you mentioned the main pipe, keeping that clear, but that you see roots at connections. Does that mean that that's clearing that residents would have to perhaps stay on top of?
Yes, um just, you know, any length of pipe, any old pipe has joints in it and and that's where the tree roots like to come in. And it's no different than pipes coming from your house or my house or anybody's house. They're subject to road infiltration just the same. You know, we've, we've kind of ensured that our main, the sewer main in Keystone doesn't see that same issue. But yeah, that's not to say those those connecting pipes don't don't experience those as well. And that's not something that the village, you know, could even do necessarily if we wanted to. We just don't have access to those pipes. So that that does become something that those homeowners um would be responsible for.
Do, but are we able to tell when you're checking our pipes or doing any sort of, are you able to tell that there's uh roots on the side where the residents would need to? Meaning like, could we help facilitate that work being done by notifying residents in the course of our screening? Hey, look, we see you have roots that need to be, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Patty, excuse me, Jeff, when we first had this conversation, you know, Mark and Jeff were very amenable to coming out looking and helping residents along eleven hundred block. So I I think it's one of those things that it's it's part of a part of the maintenance of your house. If you, you know, have sewers and trees and things like that that get impacted by it. Because because I think otherwise, we're we're really kind of on a house by house inspection, which I don't think we want to get into, correct, Jeff?
No, I'm not suggesting that, I'm not suggesting that, Bob.
Just, just to throw a little perspective out there, I think the guys tell our operations department, they televise about four to five miles of sewer on an annual basis. And then staff looks at that to determine which of those portions we need to line. So on an annual basis, we're looking at anywhere between four or five miles of sewer. So you can imagine both sides of the street, just how many residential connections we do come across, uh some having road obstruction, some not. There are quite a few of there, and that's not to say we couldn't do it, but that would be a substantial effort to kind of identify all of those and then reach out to all of those individual homeowners of any sort of obstruction that we did see.
Well, and I wouldn't
Yeah, okay, that's uh Patty's got one more question, then we'll go to Erica and let's kind of move this along. Jeff, okay, Patty.
I wasn't advocating that that would be something that we would do village-wide. I'm saying to trustee Brennan's um comment about if the work that's been done and then just moving forward for this particular area that we know is an issue, if there's a way to stay ahead of any potential and if we can have residents be more mindful in that area. So um but my other comment would be, based on when this was first uh presented to us and looking at on the low end, a million plus as a potential um solution to fixing things. This is certainly, looks like a better option than that if it uh does the job.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Uh Erica, do you have a question?
Yeah, um Jeff, you mentioned that we have these uh nine inch pipes elsewhere. How many other areas in River Forest do we have these nine inch pipes?
Oh, 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 a lot, I mean, we, that's what
The village is kind of divided up and so divi- from Division north, nope. Can you guys still hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay.
But you gotta remember you, you have the stormwater plant. Go ahead, Jeff.
So so like the north end of town, for instance, all the, you know, Franklin Park, all the streets that run north, south from Division, everything flows south from Division down to Iowa. And then you've got some more from south to Iowa down. So all of the upstream most pipes in town, they all start at nine inch. This isn't uncommon, um it's just the smallest pipe in our network. So it, I I didn't, and if I misled you, I I apologize. This is just the smallest pipe we have. It's by no means rare in in the village. It's it's fairly commonplace, it's just the smallest pipe we have.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Erica. And I want to make sure that trustees understand that one of our other plans that we gave direction to E- Eric is to begin the stormwater master plan. And that master plan will, Erica, I think this is maybe perhaps where you were going, is going to give us a, you know, a global look of the village, of all the different pipes, the age of the pipes, and hopefully give us a plan, um you know, in a ten, twenty year plan to 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 look at how we're going to replace this infrastructure. To me, this is what we do, we do, we we know, we do infrastructure. So we should have a master plan that looks at all of the uh village-wide, um you know, sewers and and have a plan to replace them over time.
Right, and our our P is still coming, is planning on coming back to the board before we send that out.
Okay, good. All right, so I mean, I'm, I I mean, I
Kathy, I was just gonna say, based on where we started um with the million dollars approach and bringing it down to two hundred thousand, and this is a good first step to at least try to address the issue, it sounds reasonable. Um I'm in favor of moving ahead and trying to provide some relief to the residents there in Keystone.
And just to clarify my understanding, this is a two hundred thousand dollar fix, but it's only fixing theoretically two out of the maybe eight or ten stormwater. So it could actually end up being a million dollar fix. This might be just an incremental project, but it's possible that this might work.
That is correct.
It may help four of the drains rather than just two.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, but yeah.
We'll get a lot better idea, Katie, right? And if the uh what will get, what will get fixed, so.
Right, and and the other thing I want to point out too, just just for clarity sake, is that the issue that we had in May, and it was a Sunday, and I remember distinctly, um where we were having all that on-street flooding, the, by morning on Monday, the on-street flooding had um and throughout town had passed, right, except in this area. That, I believe, we believe, is tied more to that root in um infiltration issue. But repeatedly, this neck of, this part of River Forest has always had on-street flooding.
Yeah.
It's been on and on and on and on. The, so the the issue has always been there. I think what made it last longer was the road infiltration that caused the delay of the water to drain. But this is, that isn't the entire issue. This is more of a
And I don't want to belabor this, but I think it it we should actually say this. My understanding is that there's on-street flooding in that area by design. That sewer system in that area is designed to hold the water in the street as opposed to most of the other sewer uh around River Forest. It's going in our yards, front yard, backyard, and and sometimes into our basements and into our homes. We are, that's what we're comparing this
Right, but but Katie, I think you, yeah, but I think you're missing one point and and you're right, it was by design. I think what happened over the last several rain events, they have been significant. In May, we had a ten inch rain event, which caused more flooding on the uh street than we've ever seen. In fact, it got up to people's um houses because it was, it it was backing up so big. And some residents couldn't even get out of their driveway until the water came down. So you're right, but I mean, to me, this is, um again, this is what we do. And if uh residents can't get out of their home, then we need to fix that. And and who's to say that we're not going to have a twelve inch, thirteen inch rainfall texture, um since uh we've got issues with climate control? So um, all right, so I it's, unless somebody objects, I, it sounds like uh we've got consensus to move ahead and and um and so I appreciate uh Jeff, your your work on this, Erica.
Katie, can I ask one favor? Because I think they did such a nice job of it. Eric, um is it possible to kind of reconvene the residents there to give them an update as to what's going on and have them ask you any questions prior to us moving forward with this?
Of course.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Thanks, that's a good idea, yeah, I think. Okay.
All right, then the last item um is a new initiative we want to bring to your attention, um and we think it's uh certainly a good one. So as you know, uh every year, the village uh takes on one to two, depending on the timing of the construction season, uh one to two alley reconstruction projects, right? So this is where we go through, we completely um rip up the alley, take out the pavement and replace it uh with a new alley that typically our spec specification at this point, uh as you see, are the uh concrete ribbons on the side. And then we put a um stormwater element in the middle of the street. And so instead of the street being more of a crown where the water drains towards the garages, it's an inverted crown where the water then drains towards the uh middle of the uh alley where the uh paper bricks are. And then that feeds into the ground, uh goes back, eventually works its way back into the aquifer. And then to the extent uh the ground is at full, uh is at capacity, can't take the rain, there is a stormwater pipe that's put in there to help channel that away from the residents. Been a very successful, very well appreciated uh and liked uh program. And so we continue to work our way through that. And as you can, as you saw in the memo and here in the slide, we're about, almost halfway done. We've got about fourteen of the thirty-three alleys uh completed at this point. But there are certainly residents who are asking for, you know, well, where's my alley, where's the status, when is that going to happen? And we can't always provide that uh information for them because they may be so far out that we don't have a a timeframe for them just yet. So we sat down and looked at this and said, okay, well, what if we did all the alleys? So if we just got it all done, what would that cost? And so in order to complete the reconstruction of the remaining nineteen alleys, you're looking at about four million dollars in cost. If we issued debt for that, which we could do, um and what we would do in this situation is issue an alternative revenue bond. So really, in terms of your kind of a bond one-on-one type of situation, you have your general obligation bonds, which are backed by the full faith and credit of the municipality. And then you have uh which are your property taxes. Uh and then you have alternative revenue bonds where you pledge an alternative revenue source uh to um uh pay for that debt. So when we issue the water bond, if we, you know, move forward, we do the AMI project, will, that will be an alternative revenue bond and water revenue uh will be pledged to make that debt. In this instance, we would use the revenue we're getting from the red light cameras as a, the revenue source to go ahead and make that debt service payment. And right now, we're already spending anywhere between, you know, two fifty to three hundred thousand dollars a year in uh alley work. Uh as you can see, the annual debt service payment was about four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So we're really spending just a little bit more uh than what we're spending now. And don't forget, we are in the process of transitioning to a new vendor. Uh we anticipate uh receiving more money as a part of that um relationship. So we will be getting more money into that fund as a result. And then lastly, and as the village president talked about at the onset of this conversation, we still have potentially this pot of money from the state through I dot. And so when the new circular letter comes out, we could take that money and then pledge it towards that debt service as well that would re- uh reduce the obligation. So the four thirty-three is just really our all-in amount. We may be able to top tap into um another revenue source. And you know, debt is an interesting um, you know, animal here, uh and we don't have a lot of debt on the books, as we mentioned in the memo. We've got the I E P A loan through the state for the NSMP, and then we have our our D sub uh that we use uh for general infrastructure. While we always try to keep our debt down, just a matter of as a practice, debt can be used in a strategic way. And here's a really, I think, a good example to use it. Number one, you're putting it back into infrastructure. That infrastructure has a long uh shelf life, you know, twenty plus years. And then third, the interest rates right now in general are very low. I know some municipalities, now these were G I know some municipalities, now these were GO bonds, so there'll maybe, that would be rock bottom. But there were towns that were getting under one percent on an interest rate for debt. So, essentially, you're looking at free money. Um, and you really can't pass up those opportunities when you have them. So, this is kind of the stars aligning right now between, here, you know, we've got additional infrastructure we can, uh, we can do for the residents. We've got low interest rates. Um, it's kind of the, the, the positive, uh, perfect storm, if you will, to do a project. And so, what we'd be looking for your consensus is, uh, to move forward with this, to accelerate all these alleys to be reconstructed. Um, and then, uh, we would go ahead and, uh, accelerate the design. As you know, you just approved a contract for some design work. Um, we would have to, uh, either go out to another bid or amend that contract somehow, uh, to include all these additional alleys. And then, uh, eventually issue the debt for that and take, and bid out the work, uh, et cetera. So, not, uh, you know, in terms of what we're asking and what we're seeking your direction for, um, certainly not an overly, uh, complex or sophisticated, uh, ask. Um, but I think a good one for the community.
So, maybe you can explain, um, for my purposes as well for the village board. Uh, maybe you said this, I missed it. Where, the alleys, where are they mostly at? On the south end of River Forest?
Uh, I believe they're sprinkled all over. I don't know, Jeff, if you're still on the call.
Yeah.
Or not, you'd probably have a better handle on there. But I think they're all south side, north side. I think they're everywhere.
Yeah. There are, um, I, as you see...
It looks like they're all over. I mean, the majority is in the south end. Yeah.
Yeah. That's a fair assessment. When I would say the bulk is south, but, yeah.
Yeah.
So, seventy-five per, hang on, Patty. Let me at least ask the question. Can, uh, is you saying about seventy-five percent on the south end possibly?
Uh, yeah, that's fair. That's, that's probably a fair assessment.
Okay. Very good. Okay, Patty. Yes?
Yeah. So, I just had, um, in terms of some of the alley work already. So, I had gone back some time ago and was looking at the ratings of the alleys, going back to when you first had ratings back in two thousand and fourteen, compared to our most recent map that was given, and looking at where we've already done improvements since then. So, would you say that there are perhaps some alleys that had gotten improvements, but not the pavers? Or would you say all the alleys that have now a better rating had? And the reason I'm asking is because it seems the numbers that are left is, uh, a few lower than nineteen for one thing. So, that's one part of it.
So, to answer your first question, yeah. I mean, some of the, some of the first alleys we did, um, we were just, the, the first few were just resurfaced alleys. So, you've, you've kind of got these multiple factors playing into that. We've got drainage impacts on one side, and a brand-new alley that's paved with a crown with new asphalt. That's a great, you know, that's an alley in great shape, but it could still have a, a lot of drainage, uh, impacts, adverse impacts, I should say. Um, so, yeah, we, I, I know we have some fairly new driving, you know, new alleys with, with nice driving surfaces, but are, you know, still drainage problems. Um, now, we kind of try to compare all that together, but it's apples and oranges to a certain degree. You can eyeball an alley and give it a number rating based on the driving surface, but now you're kind of trying to tack on drainage impacts, and that all comes in anecdotally from residents. So, um, i- it is a bit of a balancing act as, as you kind of rate those to try to take that all into account.
So, the ratings are just based on the drivability of the alley, basically, you're saying?
Yes. At, at the time that that alley, uh, rating survey is done, that's really just the drivability. And then as residents come in to staff with, you know, rain event pictures and, and ice buildup, and, and we start to build that evidence, um, separately, that further informs a decision of what alley gets, gets completed, you know, in the next fiscal year.
Okay. And then in terms of this, um, estimate cost, the four million, how is that, if we're roughly saying two-fifty to three-hundred an alley, it seems you end up being higher than the four million there. Are you anticipating economy of scales with this? So, what are you, how are you breaking out potential costs per alley?
Sure. So, we took unit pricing from last year when we did three alleys together. Um, that was the first time we kind of did a, a, a bulk project with multiple alleys. So, um, we use that unit pricing, um, to, to kind of do the best, raise some economy of scale here. I would hope to see even a little bit more if we did all of this at once. Um, but to what degree we would see additional economy of scale, I don't know.
And do we know with the, with all the alleys, would you say, do we have knowledge that there are flooding issues, issues universally with all of them? Or, I mean, I know certainly, especially south, between Franklin and Park, they've had ongoing issues. I've met with residents out there, um, who had very severe issues, it sounds like. Um, so, when we talk about wanting to do all the alleys all at once... And the only reason I'm asking this is just in terms of long-term, this price over a period of time, like you're saying, twenty years, is probably a good thing and at the low rate. But just in terms of having some unknown as far as still, um, impact to our budget and money, you know, with COVID, we don't really know what that end site is. So, just in terms of, if we wanted to look at maybe doing half as opposed to all of them, um, do we have a sense? How many of the alleys actually contribute to flooding over others? Does that make sense? That would mean it would be more of a priority, of course, than...
Sure.
Some.
Sure. Um, globally, no. I, I don't think we, I, I can't currently answer that for you. Um, the, the only, the only sense for drainage impacts that we have are those that are brought to us by residents. And sometimes we could have an alley that's, you know, a full block long, obviously, and there might only be two people that see drainage impacts because they have a low yard and their parking pad is lower than everyone else's off the alley. So, that's where everything kind of flows into their yard. Um, so, you know, drainage impacts, again, it's, it's kind of a, it's, it's hard to encapsulate them because they affect people one lot to the next and vary differently. Um, one neighbor might have no water. The next neighbor might have eight inches for five days after a major rain event. Um, we try to take that into account when we select, you know, the next alley for the next fiscal year. But, um, globally, no. I don't think at this point. I know the four that we're currently designing, uh, the one you mentioned down between Park and Franklin, um, those four between, I should say, Park and Ashland from Hawthorne down to Washington. Those four alleys, um, I think three of those were the three that I received the most kind of feedback about drainage impacts about. And so, that's why they were selected. And the fourth was just kind of brought in because it was, you know, geographically, we get some economy of scale with survey and sewer connections and things like that. Um, but, but beyond that, it's, I, it's kind of a one-off when, when folks contact staff. It's, it's, it's very sporadic and, and very random. It's hard to say what would be a priority over the next one.
Right. So, I gotta, hang on, hang on, Bob. Just, hang on, Bob. Um, so Jeff, just so I understood, I mean, there, so the issues of, um, the yard flooding, um, from the water from, um, some of the alleys, are you saying, what's your point of view on that? I mean, is that another cause? Or is that potentially a fix?
Both. Um, you know, the way current alleys are designed, as Eric mentioned, there's a, there's a kind of a high point in the middle. It's the crown, and then everything pitches to the alley edge. Well, everybody else, I shouldn't say everybody. A lot of folks have, you know, a garage with downspots that are pointed towards the alley. And then a lot of folks have a parking pad right next to that. So, in some cases, you've got the entire kind of frontage of the property contributing drainage to the alley, and there is no infrastructure to handle it in the alley. Well, it's gonna build up and, and kind of, our alleys are very flat. They're, they're not designed to convey water to one end or the other. So, everything just kind of builds along the edges, and it's gonna pop and go somewhere at some point. And typically, that's somebody's backyard. Um, so, the current alleys, I would say, yes, are, are probably contributing to that. But when we redesign them and put these new alleys in, that certainly helps address that and, and mitigate that issue.
So, just so I'm, I'm clear, when you say help and mitigate it, um, would you say that the permeable pavers, um, are able to take on a more than eighty percent of the water that we see in the alleys? I mean, or, I mean, not, not that I'm trying to get you to a, a percentage. I'm just trying to get to a comfort level that, um, for those that see yard flooding, that the permeable pavers will take on, um, much of that water, number one. And it sounds like in two, it won't go into the combined sewer system, um, which is already small and aging and, and could affect, uh, other neighbors down the road, I assume, or down the street.
Sure. Um, so, all I can tell you is that the alleys that we've done to this point, um, and the last really good idea I can think of was the, um, the alley behind the Bonnie and Thomas development site. It's kind of a T-shaped alley up there. It's, it's bound by Bonnie, Bray, Harlem, and Division to Thomas. Um, they used to see substantial flooding, and that used to go into the backyards along the Bonnie, Bray properties. And I've been up there several times after some pretty heavy rain events, including the main rain event. Um, and that's not to say, didn't build up to some degree. Water was gone. There was no water, and I received no...
I lost Jeff.
I lost Jeff.
I think next time you should be in here.
All... Bonnie...
He could join the metal band with the paramedic.
I mean, here, I think...
Sounds like a guitar.
He's thinking of Snoopy character. I think, I, I think what Jeff was trying to say.
Yeah.
All right, Jeff, we'll, we'll step in for you.
Yeah.
Where we have made those...
There is some water that goes into this sewer system.
Wait a minute.
Right. So, basically, what Jeff prob, I think I'm guessing he said was that where we have made those, these improvements, there have been little, I, I'm not, haven't, haven't heard a complaint.
Okay.
You know, this, they have provided a, a substantial, um, improvement. Again, you're, you know, you're, you get the ten-inch rain event. You're gonna get pounding everywhere in town, right? But now here, all that is going to get away and move out very quickly, uh, and not go back into the residents', um, property.
Okay. Thank you.
Eric, if we were to pledge the red light camera, um, revenue, uh, for these bonds, what happens if the state, for instance, outlaws red light cameras?
Right. Fair question. So, you've got a couple of things you could do. You've, certainly, we've got the I-DOT money that would help, um, bring that amount down. You could always use MFT money, your regular MFT allotment, if you wanted to do that. Uh, and don't forget, you have your D-Sub amount. So, the amount that we bonded out on a two-year, uh, cycle, we could, uh, very easily, um, once that is up, you could, uh, refund that, um, uh, into a larger, uh, longer period to make that payment as a kind of a belt and suspenders backup.
The other question is, it's similar to the, um, water meters. Are we looking at a bulge at some point down the road where we're gonna ha- have to, again, either fix or replace two-thirds of the sewers in the village? Two, two-thirds of the, uh, alleys in the village by doing it all at once? I get the economies of scale, but it's just, we're now sort of grouping the obsolescence of these things instead of spreading out their obsolescence like we've done in the past?
Yeah. I, I, again, I understand that concern. I think the only difference here, though, is with the alleys, the alleys here is gonna get a much longer life out of, right? And so, you know, you're looking at more of a twenty-to-twenty-five-year timeframe than you would like a street resurfacing that's probably more in that eight-to-twelve-year range, right? So, that, there probably is some truth to that. Um, but again, the other thing I would tell you too, there, and the reason that, uh, timeframe is spread out is because we are doing the full reconstruction. So, in the past, where we've done the resurfacing, uh, and not addressed the water issue, um, you're digging the ground up, putting in new base, new aggregate, and really, you know, putting in a, you know, the Cadillac of alleys, if you will. And so, um, that is going to spread that out a little bit further. And, you know, in twenty to thirty years, when maybe they need to start, uh, doing some work, you know, we'll start, uh, the board at that time. I'm sure we'll start looking at that and taking that on. Now, the other, the only other thing we mentioned in the slide deck too is that we'll just have to continue to budget for annual maintenance. So, the one thing that will continue to push that out further, trustee Cardy, is that, um, the alleys and our parking lots and et cetera, where we have those pavers, does require annual maintenance, uh, to ensure that the stormwater component continues to work.
Okay. Thank you. Bob, I'm sorry. I think I cut you off. Hang on, hang on. I think Bob had...
Oh, go ahead, Katie. Katie, please go ahead.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Eric, you mentioned earlier that the, um, um, borrowing rates are really low. But didn't, don't we apply for grants to offset the cost of these permeable paper alleys?
Uh, we have, and we've received a couple of grants from the, uh, MWRD over the last, you know, five years or so, uh, to help offset some of that cost. But again, they're, um, A, they're not guaranteed. Uh, B, they are slight offsets. They don't cover the entire, they certainly don't cover the entire cost of the project. In fact, the last one, I think, was for seventy...
This is, this is Jeff. We did, we do have an application into MWRD for the four alleys that we're currently doing as well. We've not yet heard back from them about that.
Yeah. That was my, my only thought was, if we do this all at once, we lose the value of getting some MWRD grant money each year that we continue to chip away at the, at the alleys.
But we don't, yeah. The, the only thing I, I understand that point, and we would certainly go back to the MWRD if we move forward with this to see what we can get from them in terms of assistance for this larger project. But the, we have not, we don't get funding for every project either. So, that's one, maybe every couple of projects. I know we had the one, uh, what was that, on Gale, Jeff? Is that the last one we got?
Yes. Zero Hundred Block of Gale, correct.
So, it's been a while since we, they've, they don't guarantee funding every cycle.
I, I mean, and that's kind of, that's kind of where, that's kind of where I would weigh in is, you know, you're kind of, again, betting on, on the chance that you're gonna get those kind of funds. And what kind of, what does that fund as relates to the low interest rate that we're talking about here? You know? And again, you know, I, I'm in favor of going forward now because thank God we have the red light camera money to kind of help get us going on this thing. And, you know, we gotta, we gotta take care of that for as long as we can to resolve, you know, to pay this bill. So, um, I think this is a great idea, and with the funding and, and the economies of scale we're gonna have by doing them all at once is a great idea.
Okay. And so, my second, my second comment was, or question was more for you, Jeff.
Sure.
Were, are we doing the same amount of permeable surface in every alley? Have we ever considered increasing the percentage of permeable surface versus impermeable to absorb more water?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's certainly something we could do. Um, it, it, you know, it kind of cuts both ways. So right now, we've, we've kind of done, we've done this enough over the last few years where we've continued to tweak the design on an annual basis to kind of maximize our benefit. Right now, we're, we're in a bit of a sweet spot because the, the width of the, the width of the pavers right now is dictated by the pallet, the width of the pallet that they come on. So now, we specify a trench width for the paver so that the guys that are installing them can just pick them up. They have this kind of golf cart machine, if you will, that has a little mini train over the front end. They pick a layer off the pallet, they drop them in, and they go right back to the pallet, and they grab another. It's like a square yard at a time almost. Um, when you start getting away from that, you start getting into, you know, cutting smaller pieces at the edges and, and things like that. Labor just becomes a, a more um invasive process. And that's not to say we can't do that, but your prices then change too. So you, you kind of have to deal in these units where, where probably they're looking at the, the general width of pavers that we have now, or you start to look at, you know, double that width um to kind of, if you want to maintain that unit pricing. That said, your price then, if you double, obviously, the, the amount of pavers, the price goes up by at least double because now you're, you know, you're not gonna get any economy of scale there because it's not enough, but you're paying for a lot more pavers. So, and that's one of the more expensive elements of these projects. So um, yes, to answer your question, we certainly can do that. Um, but it's also gonna change the, the total cost of the alley.
I would think in the interest of longevity of the alley, you would want the cars to be driving on an, a impermeable survey, on concrete, right? You wouldn't want them driving on the pavers.
Yeah, I mean, that's not to say you can't do it though. I mean, these, these pavers are designed at this point, they're, they're pretty substantial. They're designed to take traffic loading and, uh, on everyday basis. The alleys that we did up at the northeast corner of the village, um, geez, that was, I think, 2014, 2015. Those, uh, those are full widths. They see garbage trucks, um, moving, moving trucks, things like that, and they're still in fairly decent shape. So um, it's not to say you can't do that. Um, but again, it, it, it just, it kind of has pros and cons either way.
Yeah, I would, I, the one thing I would add is, I think we're really in a good sweet spot in terms of the design of the alley project. You know, Jeff has designed several different iterations, versions of it. And the other thing too, I would just remind the board, is really the, the, the benefit becomes, you know, in the stormwater perspective, it's not necessarily how many pavers you have, it's what you're putting in in terms of the aggregate underneath the ground uh to ensure that that water has somewhere to go. So that's where I think you see, where you don't see the benefit is what's underneath those pavers that gets us um, you know, more capacity for that water to drain out to. And I think that's been a, a, a good benefit for the, uh, for the design.
So I guess I'm gonna personally just go back to that. I mean, I think obviously, as we've said, the alleys that have been done definitely show improvement and, and are the way to go. Um, I guess I'm still just kind of the idea of having a, a better sense of where we have water issues on the rest of these alleys.
Yeah.
In terms of, you know, because again, particularly the ones that have been resurfaced, the idea of redoing it just for the sake of redoing it if we're not seeing flooding concerns.
I don't think there's any, I don't think we're redoing alleys for the sake of redoing them. I think we're redoing them for a better design and better um way to um alleviate, not even flooding, but um, you know, taking water and taking it also out of the sewer system as well. Um, so since the permeable pavers, the water will go inside the pavers and not into the water system. So it has a dual benefit. Um, and, um, and I, I don't think, I'm prepared to pick who we do and who we don't do. I think, uh, all these alleys are important and they all should be, be done. Um, again, that's what we do. So I think there's a benefit uh, uh, for everybody in every alley.
Well, and what we've been doing is picking and choosing. That's how we've approached it from the start. So it's just, that's a matter of funds available, right? You, sometimes you, you do what you have to do. So that's what I'm saying, back to maybe looking, just for argument's sake, at the very least, to see where we're looking at, how many really have issues, again, because of the financial unknowns with COVID, to commit to this amount of money if we can maybe save some, because we're not really needing to do some of the alleys. It's not the same severity as um some.
Yeah.
And maybe we find they are all necessary right now. I just, I'm just saying, for me, it would be nice to have that information.
So, so if I could, I, I, just listening to that, I mean, we, we just had a budget presentation that just basically came through and said, we've done a pretty darn good job of coming through COVID. So, so I, I don't understand the point there, you know? And then, as it relates to when we do these alleys and when flooding happens, I mean, it's gonna continue to happen over time based on deterioration of some of these alleys. So, you know, somebody's alley might be okay this year, but then we get a hundred-year flood next year and it's not. So I, I'm just, I, I don't know how you, how you get down to the, you know, the, the nitty-gritty of understanding, you know, on a, on an annual basis, which alley is gonna flood and which one isn't.
And Eric, if I understood you correctly, the debt service on this, these bonds would be about the same as what we're currently paying to do the alleys on a piecemeal basis each year, correct?
Right. So you're spending three, around 300,000 plus or minus. You're gonna be at about four, whatever it is, four thirty-three.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's insignificant, it's not insignificant, but it's not a lot. And given hopefully the uh IDOT money and there's just so other additional funds that we can, um, I just think that, which is not a lot of money, the additional, you know, funds versus the benefit that our residents get some better infrastructure and more permeable pavers and more environmentally friendly, um, you know, uh, alleys. I just think it's, it's the right thing to do right now. Again, I, I mean, I know I've said this and, but it is what we do. We do infrastructure, and I don't know why we would have other residents wait, you know, five, 10 years, or five, eight years to get an alley reconstruction when I think we could do it and, um, under reasonable financial conditions. So, um, I'm, I'm in favor of it. I think it's a great idea. I think it's something we should, uh, we should do, you know, for our residents.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it too. I, I don't think that it's just strictly an issue of localized flooding. I mean, as, as somebody said, i- in addition to addressing the localized uh flooding that some alleys might have, it also does lessen the burden on the storm sewer.
Right. Yeah, and that is the added benefit. Right. Absolutely. Okay, um, well, I appreciate it. Yeah, I, you know, one thing I forgot to talk about water reclamation, and I forgot to give a plug for the Sustainability Commission. I don't know if you heard this, Katie, but the, uh, the commission just won an award from the Me- uh, Me- Metropolitan Water Reclamation District uh, uh, for the best sustainable landscaping award for 2020. How about that? So, uh, you'll hear that in the coming, uh, weeks. Um, uh, so congratulations to Lisa Gillis and the Sustainability Commission uh for their hard work. So that's great news. Sorry. I just wanted to, I forgot about that, and we were talking about um, M, uh, MWRD. Okay, so unless I hear any real objections, I, it sounds like you've got consensus to kind of sort of move to, toward, um, you know, this project. I think it's gonna be a great one for our residents and one, um, I'm glad to see, uh, what we're doing. Okay, so I think that ends, uh, our.
Nope.
Nope?
One more.
Yeah, yeah. Oh my gosh, 90. Sorry. And that's why you've been here. So if I get him, uh, we got 90s. So if I can get a motion and a second on, on 90, sorry.
Motion to award a contract in the amount of $103,508 to Davenport Group USA Limited for the acquisition of the right to use Davenport's LAMA software and professional implementation services for the configuration of and training on the LAMA software.
Back in.
Okay, very good. Okay, Lisa.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, everybody. I'm gonna, uh, share my screen. I just have a brief presentation to walk you through, uh, this. Oh, it looks like Sarah has got it. That's okay, great. Sarah, if you can advance the slides for me, I'll let you know. Uh, so, good evening, Madam President and Village Trustees. Thanks for the opportunity to present staff's recommendation to award a contract for the purchase of land and license management software this evening. I'll keep my comments brief, but I do want to take a few moments to highlight how and why we are bringing this recommendation forward and what value this will add to the organization and to the community. And as we proceed, I want to acknowledge the tremendous efforts of John Pape and Sarah Pfeifer in getting us here. Uh, they've done an excellent job coordinating this process, and Eric and I are grateful to have them in our corner. So Sarah, if you can move us to the next slide, that would be great. Or whoever is running it. Yeah, very good. Uh, okay, so first, I just want to discuss, uh, the challenge and, and the problem that we're trying to solve with this issue. Uh, the village wants to improve building department customer service by giving customers more information, uh, in a more timely manner, any time of day. Uh, we want to provide them with greater access to our services online, and we want to streamline building department operations and create operational efficiencies. Uh, the existing software modules that we have for planning permitting, code enforcement, and licensing have limited functionality and will not be upgraded. The village currently utilizes Springbrook as its ERP, which is its enterprise resource planning tool. And they have a permitting and licensing module, um, but they're not upgrading them any further. So we've taken that software to the, uh, to its limits, and there's no greater functionality that's gonna come out of it. So there won't be any online permitting, um, no opportunities to streamline operations further. And so we are looking for options that will allow us to do that. And, uh, we certainly had the need before COVID, but beginning in mid-March, when the village hall closed its front counter and, uh, its, its village hall services to the public, uh, we had to really overnight kind of flip our, our operations, um, in a pretty significant way. And we began offering, and we still offer customers, the ability to submit their, uh, materials via email. And so it's made it a little bit easier on the customer end, but it has not created operational efficiencies on the backend. Um, it hasn't made things more efficient. It hasn't streamlined it or added any workflow capabilities. So, um, we are hoping, um, that, uh, in fact, or not hoping, we in fact know that these, uh, software upgrades will, uh, allow us to achieve our goals here. And, um, if anything, COVID-19 and the pandemic and the potential movement, you know, back to a phase, if we have a resurgence, back to phase three or back to some previous phase where we have limited customer interactions, really underscoring the need to make this upgrade now. Sarah, go ahead. There we go. Uh, so, uh, in a perfect world, the village would be able to offer all of these services and enhancements under one ERP solution. Uh, however, that's often challenging because software companies specialize, uh, that specialize in financial management tools may not necessarily specialize in land and license management tools and vice versa. So as a result, staff issued an RFP in January 2020 for new software outside of the ERP system. Uh, Springbrook is owned by a company named Exella, uh, and Exella could have had an option to bid on this, but quite frankly, their version of the land and license management software is really not well-suited for an organization of our size and is really intended for much larger organizations. So Springbrook's solution was not, um, considered as part of this. But we did receive responses from eight vendors. We identified two finalists, and, uh, that occurred. So we received all the RFP responses on March 2nd, 2020. So as you can imagine, we were a little diverted for a short period of time, but we began demoing software in June and selected two finalists to provide us with those demonstrations. Uh, we had every, a representative from every department who would be utilizing the software participate in those demonstrations. So we had representatives from, uh, finance, engineering, fire, administration, and the building department. And after the two days of demonstration, staff unanimously recommended Davenport's Lama solution or LAMA solution. So I just want to take a moment, um, to talk about the different modules and the functionality that this, uh, software will provide. Uh, Davenport is the name of the company. Lama is the name of the software. Davenport really began as a GIS company and then moved into the, uh, land and license management space. Uh, so they have a broad range of experience in tying information back to individual land parcels and providing a really robust solution that will integrate pretty well with our GIS database and our Laser Fiche Electronic Records Management System. So of the solutions and the modules that they have within the Lama software, I just want to provide you with a pretty high-level overview of what we're looking at and how this will benefit, um, employees and the public. Uh, first of all, we'll have a planning tool. So that would apply to our zoning entitlement processes, uh, for example, plan development applications. We would be able to allow applicants to submit this information online, and it would route it internally in a pretty efficient process compared to how we do it now. So the, the village staff, the consultants, and all of the technical review that goes on, we would really be able to streamline that on the backend uh, and improve that process. So there's less having to email documents, share documents on centralized websites. This would all really be in one place. And the nice thing about it too is it would central, centralized document retention for future reference. So if we approved a plan development and we have a site plan, that will be in there and we can, you know, refer back to it in the future pretty easily using the Blue Beam, um, plan review software that comes with this uh, to compare what was approved versus what was submitted and, and find out those answers really quickly without having to physically pull out documents or go retrieve records from multiple sources. In terms of the permitting module, I think this is where the greatest number of people will see the biggest difference. So right now, you can submit applications for permits over email, but here we would, uh, have customers submit them online. We would be allowed to, uh, pay their permit fees online. They would be able to check the status of their permit applications, plan reviews, get those comments, uh, a little bit faster and in real time. Uh, it would associate contractors with individual permit applications and auto verify the status of licenses, and that's really a service for the public to make sure that the contractor that they're choosing to hire is actually licensed with the village, and if they're not, they can go ahead and take care of that process. So it will also streamline our internal processes. We have third-party plan reviewers that assist us from time to time, and they will be able to complete all that work within this system remotely. Um, and if we're ever in a situation where we have to have staff working offsite for whatever reason, they will also have the ability to do, uh, online and virtual plan review to help with continuity of operations. So we think this will be a streamlined per, uh, process both for residents, applicants, and staff, and will provide a lot of, uh, customer service to the community, and will enhance our customer service. We also will be moving to an online inspection, inspection scheduling process. Right now, the process is you call in or you email and you request your inspection, and the staff member lines it up. All of this will now be moved online. Uh, also, residents will be able to pay any, uh, reinspection fees online. They'll be able to have real-time access to permit data, inspection history, and key information. Inspectors in the field will be able to complete the inspections on a virtual form and submit those right away rather than waiting until the end of the day to bring all the paper inspections into the office. The other nice piece about this is that it will enforce inspection sequencing. So with inspections, a rough inspection is always required before a final inspection, and it would ensure that someone can't schedule a final inspection unless there is a record of a rough inspection on the file. So that will really help to, uh, streamline operations and ensure the integrity of, uh, the built environment here in River Forest by enforcing that sequencing. Next is the licensing manual, module. So, uh, anyone who applies for a business license, contractor license, or even other licenses will be able to apply for those, uh, initial licenses online, and then will be able to renew them on an annual basis also online. So we'll be able to streamline the process of noticing people when they are about to have a license expire or when some, uh, professional credential or supplemental document attached to that license is about to expire, so that they can always keep those things current. So if your certificate of insurance runs out or your bond expires, a contractor will be alerted and, and informed that they need to go ahead and bring that back to current. So that's really helpful. Um, and it also will, um, allow them to submit all of their documentation online. Again, it improves the internal workflow and allows for online fee payment. Moving on to code enforcement, uh, there's an opportunity here for, again, more efficiency. Uh, we would be streamlining case tracking and inspection schedules uh, and managing those cases from complaint to resolution, all the way through the adjudication process and online fine payment. So say for an example, we get a complaint that a house on 123 Main Street has long gra- uh, you know, tall grass weeds growing on the property. The inspector can go out into the field with a smart device, take photos, upload those, email those right off to the property owner or the responsible party because we have that information kind of built into the database or we can build it, um, notice them of what the issue is, uh, provide photos, um, and then give them, you know, a notice that they need to bring the property into compliance within a set period of time. It would automatically schedule an inspection. So our inspector, uh, is alerted to the date that they need to go out and take a look at it. Um, we can issue citations from the system, and then all of that can get pulled into a docket, handed to the judge on adjudication night. The judge can make a decision about a fine, and, uh, the applicant or, I'm sorry, the responsible party can either go online and pay the fee, or they can go upstairs at the end of the hearing, uh, and pay the fee at the front counter. So it really is a streamlined process, and we do all of those things now, just not nearly as efficiently as we could, and the software will really help us in that sense. So I just want to talk about the financial impact of this purchase. As you may recall, the fiscal year 21 capital improvement plan included $335,000 for this project. That included money for hardware, software, licensing, implementation, and consulting. Uh, the contract that we are recommending to you to award tonight is in the amount of $103,508. That includes, uh, one-time expenses for hardware, software, licensing. It includes the first year of the annual subscription for all of the licenses, which is, uh, about $20,000, just under. And, uh, the village has worked pretty closely with Client First on the initial phases of this project, and we will continue to work with them on implementation. To date, any agreements with Client First related to their assistance with this process has been within the village's spending authority, so we haven't had to come back and bring those contracts to the board, and we wouldn't have to do that going forward because again, it would be within our spending authority. But obviously, the contract award is, is outside of our spending authority and requires board approval. We do anticipate annual maintenance costs on this and subscription costs. Uh, again, the first year is for $19,844. We did negotiate a cap in the agreement, uh, that the, um, uh, renewals would be in line with the CPI, not to drop below 0%, but not to exceed 3%. So we think that is a pretty sustainable cost. And any future subscription cost will be built into the budget, and if they exceed staff's sp- spending authority, which is $20,000, then they would be brought to the village board for approval at that time. So the good news here is that the project is significantly under budget. We certainly did have options among the eight vendors that would have, uh, met or exceeded our budget, but we are coming in at a number that we're pretty happy about and getting robust software that provides all the functionality that we need for a good price. So our recommendation and our request for tonight is that the board award the contract to Davenport Group USA Limited in the amount of $103,508. And I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Hey, hey Lisa, it's Bob. Um, I just have two things. Um, number one, um, what are you gonna do with the front counter now that nobody's gonna be hanging out there with drawings and things? And, and, and is this, just a quick question, is this a cloud-based system? So when, when we have, you know, when we're, we're retaining drawings and things like that. that, um, you know, is there, is an additional fee for, uh, to store this in the cloud or what's the, what's the, the storage, uh, program?
That's a great question. So it is a cloud-based solution and it was actually cheaper than an onsite, uh, solution. I don't remember exactly what the cost difference was, but I think it was about, uh, John Pape, correct me if I'm wrong, but it may have been 15 or 20,000 dollars more, I think, to host it, um, locally.
Yep, that's right, 18,000.
Yeah, thank you. And in terms of the front counter, yeah, certainly this will give people the option to, um, you know, uh, submit a lot of this online, but we still have some fairly large construction drawings and they have to bring in, um, a variety of sets. We may not necessarily need that anymore, but there is still a pretty large demand for consultation during the pre-construction phase and a lot of code questions. And so some people like to pick up the phone and try to get ahold of the building official or any other village staff member, but there are still a lot of people who like to come into the front counter and have those conversations one-on-one, um, with our staff. So I still anticipate there will be a, a fair amount of foot traffic coming into the village hall.
This, this is very customer-friendly, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That was a part of my question. Thank you for pulling this all together and for the work that you and the team have done to review all of these software, um, options. So, um, what about those residents who may not be tech savvy? You know, because you're talking about moving this all, you know, eventually online. Uh, I'm thinking about our older residents, um, and how do we, how do we make sure that we don't have a gap there?
Sure. So there will certainly be a public education and public communication piece of this that we plan as part of the implementation and rollout. Implementation will take about six months, so it gives us enough time to start working on some of that and, and helping to teach people how to use this. The first year, there's going to, I think, be a learning curve among some contractors and some residents, um, in helping them to understand how to use the system. But it really is as simple as completing an online form and uploading documents. Um, the other thing I would say is that more often than not, we do see, um, the contractors coming in as part of their agreement with the resident, that they are responsible for applying for the permit on the resident's behalf. So most of the customer service that we provide, I would say probably 85% of it, um, maybe 90, is really to the contractors and many of them, uh, work in River Forest fairly frequently. The other thing I would say too is with the contractors, we are, um, not necessarily pioneers in the world of this software application. So a lot of these contractors and inspectors, third-party plan reviewers, they're already used to using these types of systems, which function pretty similarly in other communities. And so, um, we think that, uh, they will be able to become accustomed to this fairly quickly, but, um, certainly, uh, the first year will be, um, getting people used to the system.
Sure, yeah. And, um, I should have prefaced my question, um, with how many, and I was going to, with how many of, like, residents versus contractors? Because I'm not concerned about the contractors, it's really the residents who just may not have the ability to get online.
Yeah. Erica, that's a great question, but, um, but I, but I think again, just as, like, you know, over the last two years, you know, putting in new gutters in or putting in, um, you know, new back porch, whatever. I mean, I, contractors do it all the time. They'll take it on for the resident. But I think Erica is, is saying for those residents that may not use a contractor, that may need a permit, I'm assuming they could still call you.
Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah, so we won't be cutting off front counter service. People can submit card copies and, and all of that. Then if they're coming in, it gives us an opportunity to help us educate them on how they can use the system, um, even if it's not for submittal, but certainly to check on plan review status and to maybe even obtain an electronic copy of their permit. So, um, there is, we won't be cutting off that level of service, but for those people who are able to use the software, I think they will find this to be, um, more efficient.
Yeah, this is wonderful. Thanks.
Yeah, sorry, Erica, I didn't mean, but I think of that, those people, you're right, 90% are normally contractors, right? Are, are going to use the system for the residents. Yep, yeah, totally agree.
And I, I do want to follow up with Erica's, uh, question though. I am worried, well, I should say I'm worried. I, I do share concerns about the contractors. I mean, obviously we want to develop businesses, um, and we've been, as I understood, uh, quite, uh, oriented in terms of friendly to our contractors who want to do business in River Forest. So in the spirit of what we just said in terms of assisting our residents on the system, if we have new business people wanting to come in, will we still be able to do that and walk through some of our contractors so that, you know, we make them feel comfortable with the system as well?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we walk, we walk contractors through our process every day, all day long. Um, you know, we, each contractor license is $125 and, um, last year it was $100 and we were still generating $75,000 in contractor license fees a year. So that tells you how many contractors come into River Forest on an annual basis. Many of them work here frequently, many of them do not. And so, um, our permit clerk position is very customer service heavy and spends quite a bit of time walking contractors through the process. They're contractors, they're tradespeople, they're not necessarily always well-versed in surety bonds and, uh, insurance requirements. And so oftentimes there are multiple touchpoints with any particular contractor. So the contractor calls and then they have their insurance person call and then sometimes the insurance person has to call more than one time or we have to work out some issue because there's missing information or something isn't correct. The goal is to try to get all of it right on the first try to eliminate the number of phone calls and follow-up that our staff has to do with contractors because we do a fair amount of handholding. And so we are hoping too, that with education in the system, so as a contractor goes to apply, there's information and there's guidance right in front of them. The information has to be submitted one time. There may still be times where it's incorrect, but just really trying to take, you know, sometimes five and six touchpoints with one particular contractor and boil them down would be huge for our staff. But for those contractors that still need a fair amount of handholding, the hope is that there are fewer that do and that the process is streamlined and so we still have the capacity to address those questions as we need to. But, um, the goal is to certainly add customer service, not reduce it.
Thank you. And I also want to give you kudos for, uh, bringing the contract, I know with eight bidders, et cetera, down to 103,000 from the 335 that were budgeted, that's terrific. So I'm happy with that. Thank you.
We are too.
Hey, Lisa, I don't know if it's a change from our current vendor to have this, the residence data on the cloud as opposed to on our own servers. And, and I think about security breaches because I got two notices this week of two security breaches, one from a bank and another from, can't think of who. Anyway, um, who covers that? Is that the, God forbid we get hacked and it happens to municipalities. Is that covered by the village's insurance or is it through this, the company that we're contracting with?
So the vendor is required to include cyber coverage as part of their insurance policy and the village also carries cyber coverage as part of its insurance policy. But initially, you know, obviously we would, um, through contractual risk transfer, we would look to the source of the breach and, and we would, you know, want, if it's the software company, obviously that's done something, um, or they've had a breach, we would want them to make it right. But there are laws that apply. Res brought up an excellent question earlier today about the applicability of state statutes regarding the protection of customer information and, uh, that is a part of this. It's incorporated into the contract by compliance with additional laws. The, um, the, the payment portal, um, we are, um, and Rosie, correct me if I'm wrong, if you're still on the call, I guess she is good. The payment portal, that would be incorporated into this as a third-party provider. So Davenport and Lama wouldn't necessarily be the company that, um, holding all of the customer payment information and payment source. That would go through a vendor that we're already using and that we've already vetted and feel comfortable that they have security protocols in place, uh, for that purpose.
Yeah, John and I have been working on, on making sure it would be, go through a third-party gateway where it would all, um, they'd have to be PCI compliant and follow all those rules. So yes, you're, you're corrected.
And you'll see the line item in the contract, we're actually going to end up having to pay slightly more for it, but for the PCI compliance headache of it and the security insurance, we, we think that's important.
Thanks.
Yeah, good question.
Yeah, I just want to say this is, this was great. Obviously very well thought out, you're covering all the bases, so thank you. Nice job, Lisa and team.
Thank you. Yep. Great. Okay, any further questions? Uh, it, it, um, it, it almost, uh, kind of rounds out our, uh, our automation, uh, kind of strategy, I think we set in place years ago. So, um, glad that we, uh, we've got here. Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready for the vote, please. Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Cargie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Hennick?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, very good. Um, and, okay, I think, uh, no executive session, so we are ready to adjourn. If I can get a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I second.
Oh, great. All right, super. Uh, Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Cargie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Hennick?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Just in time, my battery is going down. All right, well, good night, everyone.
Good night, all.